Of African Americans past, present and future within our community. I, Robert Devini, Mayor of the City of Martindale, Texas, do hereby recognize the month of February 2021 to be Black History Month. I encourage all citizens to celebrate diversity and continue our efforts to create a world that is more peaceful and prosperous for all. And I do affix my signature today. We were going to do that last, at the last meeting, but we had a snowstorm instead, so we're catching up on it. All right, now, that means we're moving on to public comments. Any citizens who want to have public comment can do so. Those who are out in Zoom land, I don't know how many we have, can have the opportunity to turn in a request for written comments by noon on the day of the meeting. We did not get any today. We do have one public comment here in, on site, in the room tonight. The comments are limited to three minutes, and from Ms. Catherine Glaze, has to do with dangerous dogs. And feel free, Catherine, to sit your own.
Thank you. I just really wanted to thank the Police Department and the City of Martindale for handling the incident last Friday with my brother-in-law. He went around the shoe tree and there was a dog that, that knocked my brother-in-law down, and they responded to that, and they did ticket the lady who owns the dog. At first, we kept saying he was okay, he was okay, he was okay. Well, unfortunately, in the past, he's had two knee replacements, and when the dog knocked him down, he went to his knees. And so he's not doing real good because of being knocked over when you're 71 years old, things like that happen. Neither the dog nor the person got puncture wounds, so the dog was not put down. We have talked to the dog owner several times. The woman who owns the dog is not very repentant, so I'm afraid it's going to happen again. This has happened twice with my dog in less than a year with that same dog. So I just really wanted to make the officer aware of what's continuing to happen with that. And we're going to continue to talk with Ricky G about Wendy, who owns the dog, and see if something can be done. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jen. I had a comment come in through the Zoom chat, somebody submitted their, their comment via email. However, that was not included in the read-ahead packet, so I think we can look into it and address it at our next city council meeting. I don't have, I don't have. That wasn't included in the packet.
But there's no way that we could check in the emails to see if it was sent before the time?
She checked at noon today, or actually about 1:00. I asked, she was here, and she, she said there was nobody there. Well, if it's, if there, if there was one that came in before time, all I can do is apologize, but we don't seem to have that. The second, if it did come in after time, we'll catch it at the next meeting. We have done that before, and that's, that's what we need to go do.
She said she sent it on Sunday, what the text is.
We'll have, have her resend it, showing that the original sent date, and, and we'll see what, where it went wrong.
Nothing we can do about it for this meeting.
Okay, that, that ends public comment. Next thing on the agenda is the mayor's report, so you can broil that one up. First thing I want to talk about is the winter storm status. I've sent this to the council, just go through. Play-by-play of what happened, of course, it began, the bad weather was intended to show up on the 14th, but the weather really began to deteriorate around 2:00 and 11:00. We, we did take, took some precautions to go work through our protector wastewater system. That seemed to have worked. Public Utility Commission announced on the 14th that they were going to begin rolling blackouts, and they began almost immediately on 2:00 and 15:00. The city requested some help on the roads on 2, which was, 15th was a Monday, that was a holiday, of course, and we, on the 16th, we did announce that the city hall would be closed until the weather improved. Due to the rolling blackout, the Martindale Water Supply Company lost its power, lost power, lost power, lost, made, let the pumps freeze up. Water company kind of knew what was going on with their own equipment, but the city was still running off of the raised tower, and we didn't really all run out of water till about Tuesday morning. But it started on the 16th, excuse me, on the, on the night of 14th, between the 14th and 15th is when they actually lost their equipment. Talked to Steve on the 17th, found out that there's going to be down for probably till, till the weekend. He actually got it up a little quicker than that, but, of course, we were going to be in a boil water notice for a while after that, so it was obvious that we needed to go get some, some help around here, and we started doing that on the 18th, working through the Caldwell County Emergency Management folks, which were under their emergency management plan. We announced that. The city reached out to the United Way, trying to get some water, they were out just as well. Councilman Villalobos was able to find an individual. Guy who was helping us is the husband of a public official, but they weren't any, they weren't an official organization or governmental organization, they're just good people. And they had a tank, and by Saturday, or Sunday, we had some bulk water here that we handed out. We, of course, announced that, that once we had it here and knew we were going to be able to do that.
And it was State Rep. Aaron Zwiener.
Aaron Zwiener, yeah. The county emergency management team did finally get some water, they didn't get it from CAPCO, as where they were expected to get it from. They got it from, I believe, they got it from the Salvation Army on, but when they did get that, they included us, and we were able to hand some of those out on Monday morning. The people who needed it, but it didn't last long, and there was a lot of council members and, and other citizens that were helping out on that distribution that morning. Of course, the boil water notice was lifted on Tuesday, and during all those days that the roads were, were dangerous and hazardous, the city police force, all two of them, were patrolling the city, assisting the drivers, doing well as checks, and courtesy rides for stranded, stranded drivers as well. Then, on Saturday, the 20th, the federal government finally declared a disaster, and that was a good thing, because that opened up, that time, 77 counties, of which Caldwell County was one of them, to FEMA funds, some FEMA funds. The ones that have been opened up are called individual assistance, and that means that individuals and businesses, private businesses and private individuals are, can apply for some relief for their damage caused by the winter storm. As of latest last week, it was all just over the internet, you had to be able to go do it online. So some people don't have that capability, so we, we, the city, in the, in the library, the Martin Lake Community Library, made arrangements for those folks, they can come in and ask for some assistance on how to get on those, and we, they'll, they can go over to the library, use their equipment, and make applications if necessary, and that's, that's actually occurred on a couple of occasions already. Since last weekend, there is a phone number out there now that I do not have with me, but we'll get that posted, hopefully tomorrow I post that out there, that alleviates the need to actually have internet connections and the likelihood they can call, call in. But again, the individuals have to do this, or the businesses have to do this. We've also turned in the DSO's required, the DSO is a disaster summary outline, it's a, it's a form that you put, you submit to go help the state sum up how much damage and how many homes were damaged, how many businesses were damaged, how many people were affected. That's all been done. And then, the Martindale Water Supply will have to go through, because it's a public entity, will have to go through the public assistance process with FEMA to get their funds reimbursed. I thought, based on past history, that we would have to help them as part of the city, do it under the city umbrella, but after talking to the, to the Texas Emergency Department, the TDM, TDM folks, they're going to have to do that on their own. If the feds get to the next level and open up public assistance, if they haven't opened up yet, then they will be able to go do that, but they won't come under the umbrella of the city because they're their own nonprofit organization. Now, I put all this in here because it highlighted the fact that we've sent lots of information out across the city web. During the past two weeks, there's been lots of swirl out there in, in the world about how the city didn't communicate, it didn't do this, didn't do that, because we weren't using Facebook. But I want to remind everybody that the, the official communication path is the city webpage, and the city webpage, when you're logged into it, it's just like the emergency notification with NOAA and/or the county. If you register in it, you have the opportunity to have, have it send you text messages, or emails, or both, whenever these news flashes go out. And we've talked about that in this meeting at least a couple of times over the past three years since we got that. We've sent out flyers and utility bills. It's not a difficult thing to sign up, but if you don't sign up, you don't get them. But as we stand here today, that's the official way to go broadcast stuff out. Of course, before we had a webpage, the official way was to post it on the board out there and send it out in the news with utility bills, that was the way to broadcast to the world, or set up phone trees, which never seemed to really work too well. So, for those of you who are interested and want to, they can go, you know, if people, citizens, constituents say, how come you didn't communicate? The answer is you didn't sign up for the city news blaster, you would have got communicated to them, so.
That cityofmartindale.gov or?
Martindale.Texas.gov.
Martindale.
And on our, and on our homepage, you scroll down, you're going to see the news announcements here in the middle, but on the right-hand side, under the non-emergency dispatch phone number and permits, you have notifications link. You click on notifications, and you can sign up to subscribe and manage your subscription to your notify, notify me, and that's all the news. So you can, you can sign up to be notified of city council agendas, and a monthly, which hasn't been, monthly newsletter currently is being distributed through our utility billing, and then you get news flash. So every news flash, you can, you sign up for how to go to your email and your text message. So I'm signed up for this, so every time, you know, most of the time I was the one putting the news flash, but not every time, there was somebody from city staff as well, and I get a text alert immediately that that came out, and you can click, it comes with a link, and you click on that link, it'll take you to the city webpage with the information. A lot of times, on FEMA assistance, you can, you'll get the note, and you'll have a link that you can get more information about.
And you need to check the box, the box will either be if you want a text alert, or if you want an email alert, or if you want both. You could customize what you want to be notified. If you just want to be notified about the emergency announcements, then you don't have to check the agendas, or if you want all, if you want every, check every box.
Okay.
And there's flyers, if you come into the city hall, we have flyers at the front desk. If you want to pay your bill, feel free to grab a flyer, it has step-by-step directions to sign up for it.
All right, now, the next thing, the next disaster we had going on is still the COVID disaster. So there are two vaccines now approved, actually since last, we, we put this together last Thursday, there are three now approved, the Johnson &amp; Johnson one has now been approved by the government. The state vaccination hub is up and running in Hayes County, and registration information can be obtained to, to log into that through the Hayes County webpage, et cetera. Caldwell County had hopes of getting a hub, but as of last Monday, when, when, not yesterday, but a week ago, it looks like that, they've stopped adding hubs now. However, if you go to the Caldwell County webpage, there is a button on there, at least there was last week, that allows you to register, and I don't know where that goes, but it does allow you to get on a list to go off and get vaccinated if you want to. So there's more and more vaccines coming available. Best thing we can go do for that, I think, is to go off and go put a stop to all of this mess. And there is some news that came out today, the government, the governor issued a new executive order today that affects the masking requirements and the capacity requirements for businesses, restrictions, both of those restrictions, today. We're still studying that to exactly know how that fits everybody, but the bottom line was that businesses, or most businesses, are back to 100%, and it's not by business anymore, it's by the ones who aren't, or by counties that are having, that have hospitalization capacity issues. And Caldwell County and the surrounding counties are not part of those, there's only three right now in the state.
Not fluctuating.
And that, that may fluctuate, but everybody else, if you have, those counties are relieved of the requirement, they opened the businesses back up to 100%, so we were under 75% or 50%, depending on where you were in the hospital statuses in Caldwell County before, so they're back to 100%, and we've got to understand the rules associated with masking, but we'll, we'll get more information out on that here shortly. And the other thing that's going on, of course, is going on is the city elections. We know those are coming, they're on May 1st. We did get another petition from the folks over in the Butterfly Meadows and Hobson Ranch Estates that asked them to be a proposition on the ballot for this annexation again. We reviewed that, found out, just decided that was a valid petition. It is on the ballot, once again, it'll be on there with the proposition plus the elected officials. For the council's edification, the election actions that are going on are listed up there, just to keep us all attuned to this. When we get to future agenda items toward the end, there will need to be some decisions. We don't have to make them today, but we're going to have to make them before we get to the second meeting of April. The second meeting of April would be on the third Tuesday, which is the 20th, and the early voting starts on the 19th, and it'll be in this room, so we will have to decide how we want to handle that, be it here Zoom, or relocate, or cancel the meeting, or whatever. All right, that takes me through the mayor's report, and that brings us to the city administrator's report.
I do not have a read-ahead or slides for this meeting. I was blessed with a new arrival of a baby girl, so that took most of my month of February. The one thing, a couple of things that I have been working on of recent will be discussed later in the agenda regarding the utility billing and handling liquid accounts. And also, for city council's awareness, one of our utility clerks has resigned due to a medical necessity, and so we are once again working to staff that position. I think we may have identified a long-term solution, but not ready to announce that yet, and in the meantime, we're adjusting, and we're going to bring back a former utility clerk, who's retired, Carmen, and she's going to help fill, fill the gap for us, so we don't fall too far behind with our staffing, until we get that full-time replacement, or permanent replacement for that part-time position. Unless there's any questions, that's all I have for today.
So the woman we recently hired, Mary, or?
Yes.
And how, how long had she been on staff?
Couple, two weeks. I don't, I don't, it wasn't even, it was about two weeks of time before she provided her resignation. She only had, at that point, done a couple of shifts until the issue arose, unfortunately for, for her and, and for us, and so we wish her the best and good health and hope that she's doing okay.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate Carmen coming back and helping us out, that's very nice of her. Thank you.
Okay, financial report, Dwayne. Okay, you see before you the bank statement balances as of yesterday. You see the general fund, the various other funds located at First Lockhart National Bank, totaling $178,435. The general fund is usually flush with cash this year as property tax receipts have come in. We continue to get deposits of monies weekly on the property tax receipts. You see down a little further at the tax pool investment. Investment fund, you see the emergency fund at $207,000, then you see the Public Fund Investment Act fund, where we put our excess cash, totals $216,818. Long-term capital fund totals just over $140. So then you see the amount due the comptroller for fines is now down to $350,000. Any questions on the bank balances?
It looks like the hotel tax has gone up a little bit, a few thousand dollars.
Yeah, it, that's good. Probably, you know, a couple of thousand dollars a month comes in to that fund, $1,400 came in today, so, so, yeah, that, that continues to grow.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, this profit and loss budget versus actual of the general fund through January, we're too early in the month to have February, but this report is through one-third of the fiscal year. So if you look at the percent of budget over there, things should be, you know, around 33%, but as I mentioned earlier, our revenues are front-loaded in the year, property taxes are already 81% collected through the month of January. You see franchise fees appear to be on track. We got a big deposit the other day that only comes in quarterly, that will boost that up. Sales tax revenue, half the year budget has been received already, so that continues to look strong. All right, going down from income, you see payroll, personnel expenses, $99,687, which is 31% of, of budget so far this year, so that is on plan for the year.
Dwayne, before you get off the sales tax revenue, the $54,000 budget is really not $54,000, but that's just the piece that's non-restricted.
Correct.
Yeah. Because we don't have that other account yet going, but, but because you got to post it somewhere, all of it's going in here, so I don't want the council to think, oh my gosh, a great, great hit. In reality, the, the, the sales taxes is right on, right on target so far for the year. Now, the thing to remember is, is we've got it flat-loaded across the year, and so the summer months typically is where we get a big bump. So I don't, I think we're still in really great shape on the sales tax, but don't get confused about the fact that all the money's in there, but not all the budgets in there.
Yeah, some tricky accounting going on there, but we.
Working on our chart of accounts, basically, is what that means.
Okay, going down to, we talked about personnel, other operating expenses. Liability insurance is usually over budget because you pay for that in advance each quarter. Postage, it's a little bit ahead of plan, but total operating expenses are at 28% of budget through four months, so that looks good. Then on down through the contract, we're at 36%. We've, you see the janitorial line is quite high, we're still expecting a reimbursement from the state. We finally got our last document today to be submitted to get about $10,000 more funds from the coronavirus relief fund. So we go to the bottom line, net income, $174,776, which is basically because the property tax revenue is front-loaded, as I mentioned earlier, but everything looks okay there to me. Any questions from you guys?
Are we, did we go over the library contribution, 8122, yet?
Oh, yeah, we're down through there, yes.
So we've contributed half of the money so far.
You went, yeah, there you go, there.
When, when we contribute that money, do we ask for a spreadsheet from the library about their expenses, or where, how they spent it, or do we just say, write the check twice a year and that's it?
The contract that we have with the library has conditions, not in the terms of what their money, what they're using the money for, the only condition being that it's used for operating expenses, and they are, I'd have to look at the most recent version of the contract, because it was redone, but under the previous contract, I know they had to submit a report of what, what they've done for the, for the, and so.
And the answer to your question was, in, in the first three-year contract, that they, they, the library folks, put in there a requirement on themselves to provide to the city administrator and the city a list of every dollar, penny that was spent for the library, of how they used that money, and they did that, they've done it. During that time, people use that list to say, well, wait a minute, you didn't, I gave you money yesterday, but you didn't spend it yet, why didn't you spend it yet, where's it at, did you steal it? Okay? The next contract, I had them take that out. You know, in, in the area of no good deed goes unpunished, people were using what they intended to say as ironclad proof that we had no misapplication of funds. They twisted that and tried to use that against them, okay, for whatever reason, I have no idea. But the point of the library contract is that the city receives an accredited library, that's what we get for that money, just like the city receives appraisal services from Caldwell County Appraisal District. We send them money every year, just like we do the library, for that service, just like we send money every year to the dispatch, to, to, to Lockhart, City of Lockhart, for dispatch services. We buy the dispatchers, we don't ask them, did you spend it on radios? Did you spend it on pencils? Did you spend it on cars, whatever, you, you know? We don't, we don't ask those things. And, and I don't understand why people seem to think that we need to do that with the license.
Yeah, you're just fulfilling the, the commitment that we originally agreed upon in the budget to give them that certain amount of money.
And then, but she has gone over and beyond in detailed reports and provided everything and has everything there in black and white, what she has spent it on, where it went to, what's, you know, what, where it's being spent. So there's not any, any room for misappropriation.
Well, it's not, it's not appropriation necessarily. It's a use of the contract fund. They've done, they've been pretty responsive in the past when we've asked them for details, especially when we're going through the contract renegotiation, and they're very forthright with what they had. But it is not an appropriation. They're, they're not a city department. And so there's no requirement on them to extend those funds within a fiscal year or anything like that, other than those that are applied to, that are applicable to them under the accreditation process that's managed by the state. And so they use those funds for that purpose to meet those requirements that the state has, but the city doesn't have any additional requirements placed on them, on the use of those funds, other than that it's used for operation.
I think, thank you for that clarity. That, that clears up some misconceptions perhaps.
Okay.
Sorry. That's it.
All right, next tab. These are vendor payments for the month of January, the general fund. Scroll down through those.
So right here on the, where it's the comptroller, the eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six, that payment is going towards?
That's the quarterly remittance from the court for the state's portion of traffic fines.
So then, when I was reading through old minutes and old articles, so in that article, I, I found that money that, you know, we're spending there, that that's actually money that could be spent on roads, that's money that could be spent on different items.
No.
So they, in the article that I read, that wasn't correct.
I don't know, I would have to see the article we're referring to.
I think what I can do is you and I can, can, if you want to send me the article, we can go over it. And then if, if there's still questions or if there's possible interest for the rest of the council members, we can bring it to you.
So just, just to ask, like, with that money that we're paying to the comptroller, if we were not paying that, or once we're done, what could that money be spent on?
It would show up on the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar outstanding bill.
Yeah.
No, 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 no. I think what you're talking about is this money that we, we brought in for, well, I don't know what, what that's talking about, but that eight thousand dollars, if that's the court money, now that's, I believe Dwayne's right, that is the court money. When somebody comes in and pays a ticket, gets a ticket, the state law says that if it's a speeding, moving traffic violation, it has the fines associated with it. So it may be worth two hundred bucks. And then it adds tax on there, a couple of little processing things that are, that are for this, for different items. The amount that we get to keep out, and let's suppose that this is a, a traffic ticket and the, the driver has, has not taken a driver's safety course. The amount we get to keep, we use for whatever we want to use, is ten bucks. Now, the driver may have to take driver's education or safety course, pay some other fees, et cetera. The amount of check that he writes is about a hundred and eighty to something, Tony's not on there.
He, he is.
Some, some amount. The amount that we post up there under, under city revenue is the ten bucks. The rest of that gets put over there into this quarterly court due to state money. Because we collected it, we put it in the bank, we got to keep it. But it isn't ours. It belongs to the state. And every quarter, we got to go send them a check for all of those things that add up. And that's what that eight thousand dollars is. That, I don't know what article you were reading, but I, I, I've seen the, the instructions to the court talking about how you go account for all of that and, and, and pay it out. And I don't believe, I do not believe that, that there is any mechanism that we could go through to go stop that. That is, that is tied to the, I don't know which.
No, it was just an article that I read, and it was when Harrison was the mayor. And what it said in the article was that if we were not paying back the money back to the comptroller because of the excessive tickets, then that money that we would, you know, could be used towards city improvement.
That is true, that's true. But that's not what that eight thousand dollars.
Gotcha. Okay, that's just, I needed clarity.
The part that you're talking about?
Yeah.
Is, was the part that was confusing earlier about the sales tax revenue? And he said, well, that's really not all of it, that we only get to keep eighty percent of it. And twenty percent of that money goes to pay down for the past sins of fines that were not remitted in this manner here. And that's that number that I reported, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars at, at the bottom of the sheet you're looking at. That number's going down, you know, fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars every month.
Okay.
And that could be used on roads.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I wanted to just bring light to because, you know, with going back and as far, like, I've been, you know, reading into, some people, though as many times that we keep saying, you know, saying it and reiterating it and saying it different ways, like this, what we're paying right here towards this could be used on city improvements. So I just wanted to make that, that point in that statement.
Now, also, we do at least make that we are. That amount to the road fund. So in other words, we're setting aside twenty percent of the, of the sales tax revenue as if we were not remitting it to the state. It's kind of hard because we're transferring, we're transferring it to an account.
The group, the, the comp, the agreement, the debt payout agreement with the comptroller is that we will provide, the, our monthly payment is twenty percent of the sales tax we collect each month. The, the reason that that, they want to do it that way is, is because they're the ones that send us that. So they don't, they add up all the sales tax that comes in, and they pull off the top twenty percent, say it's ten thousand dollars and twenty percent of that's two thousand dollars, they send us a check for eight.
Gotcha.
Okay, they don't send us a check to ten, they send us a check for eight.
All right.
Now, the, the money that you just talked about is tied to the proposition that is passed every four years. We did it the last time in twenty eighteen, we're going to have to do it again in twenty, twenty, twenty-two if, if we want to. And that is that, that there's a statute that says that you can dedicate some of your sales tax, collect, collecting sales tax to road improvements, okay? And we did that. It first started in, I believe it was twenty-ten, I think is where I saw that first proposition. That was the first time they did it. They added a quarter percent to the, to the sales tax amount. And that money is restricted. It has to be used on roadside maintenance. And so we put it in a different account.
On your page there, about the second or third one down, in your, the one in your left hand. It says street.
Big town.
It's going up.
Street, street and.
Gotcha, okay.
Every month, every month, Dwayne does a really good job now of, of flopping that money in there. And then we've been using that to pay for road repairs or whatever. But that doesn't say once that money's gone, we have to stop road repairs.
Yeah.
But we, we could always use general funds for that road repair, et cetera. But we can't use that money for anything but roadside maintenance. And roadside maintenance is kind of broad. It's, it's not just pothole picks. It can be signs, it can be mowing, it could, anything to take care of the, of the roadways, et cetera. In twenty-twenty-two, if we don't go put that proposition back on there, we have to back off on our sales tax.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Thank you for doing a good job.
Lisa, you said you wanted to say something.
You, you, you got to the point that I was trying, was going to chime in, but just to, for clarification purposes, for residents and anybody who's not fully versed in this, when you go to the grocery store or to the pack and sack or wherever it is, and your sales tax is paid, that money does not go directly to the city. That money goes from that business to the state. When the state collects it all for the month, they take their twenty percent and they keep it, and like the mayor said, they send us the rest. So I was just wanting to reiterate, but there was a little confusion for it, so thank you.
All right. So that's the payments from the general fund for the month. Here's the budget report for the utility fund. You see first two lines, wastewater and solid waste services, the main, the major sources of revenue. If you look over in the far-right column, you see they're thirty-three and thirty-four percent. So third of the way through the year, we're right on, on plan with those revenues. And if you go down to the expenses, you'll see the expenses are at thirty-three percent as well. So the utility fund is on plan through the, through the month of January. Year-to-date through the month of January. The next tab will show the payments out of there.
All right. On the profit and loss, on the first page, the expense payroll overhead expense, number six-three-three-zero?
Yes.
What is that payroll overhead expense, seven thousand, three hundred?
The people that man that desk over there, that's their payroll cost.
Oh, just general pay, payrolls, like monthly payroll?
Exactly. Everyone is paid out of the general fund and the utility fund reimburses the general fund for the clerks up there. That's what that is.
The clerks here in the building?
Yes, right.
Yes, okay. Or here.
Well, not, not her, just, just the two that sit there at the desk on, on the left when you walk in.
I see, okay. Yeah, I, I was confused because it said overhead, but that means something.
Well, in the next line, admin overhead is, you know, that's, that covers all overhead, not just direct payroll.
Thank you.
That's an attempt to go cover all the costs associated with, with utilities. So what does utility do? Well, utilities are a billing system, so most of the postage is in there, envelopes, a lot of printing, both the printing comes out of there, et cetera.
Yeah, we did a deep dive on that. It was, it was, not to the dollar, but it was very close, within, you know, a couple hundred dollars over the course of the year.
Okay.
And I think that's, that's the report. There's no activity in the, in the community development fund of this month. That's the, the month, money that I mentioned we should be getting over the next thirty days or so from the coronavirus relief fund, but no activity this month.
There's still about eight grand, a little over eight grand.
Yeah, I couldn't remember how much, yeah.
We received last year, I don't know how much, it was thirteen something.
I have one last question, please.
Sure.
I noticed that we still have the twelve thousand dollars for the police car, so we haven't started that lease agreement yet?
The car is expected to arrive at the upfitter in April. And then when, once the outfitting is done and we accept it, then, then that payment will be made.
Okay.
Car is ordered.
Right. Yeah, well, I just don't know that when we kind of voted on this, that there, there were still some, I felt like there were some lingering questions with, with some of the council members. So I kind of wanted to open it up for, if somebody wanted to talk about it, it looks like we still have time to put it on another agenda. That's all I want.
I think like, right now, it just pertains to budget. Like, if it's other lingering issues that have to deal with, you know, anything else other than not with money, then we should just move on.
Well, I didn't want to talk about it. I just wanted to open it up to, we wanted to put it on, on that subject on a future agenda. Okay.
And I totally agree.
Yeah.
All right, that brings us to court report.
Good evening, everybody. Let me see. Okay, I think everybody's got the report in front of you. I'm looking at it on my phone here as we go. I will be more than happy to take any questions anyone has about the report or anything else.
We're getting close to back on track from where we were a year ago then. Not quite, but we're getting an improvement in terms of the splits between February twenty and February twenty-one.
Yeah, that was a, truth be told, that was a, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm trying to, so y'all can hear me the best and I can hear you. Yeah, and that, that, that February was, was fairly, you know, let's just say lower than typical.
Okay.
So, but yes, brighter days, brighter days ahead.
Our typical month then is closer to that eight to ten thousand we typically see.
Typically, yes. It seems like the last year has been forever for everybody. I know that. And, but looking back, yes. And I can also tell you, because I know what the checks, traditionally the quarterly checks are, which stick in my mind more than, you know, that's a figure that I, I, you know, can most easily recall. And you see that what I've, I've estimated there, I think it's ten-five for this quarter, those checks are usually in the fifteen to twenty range.
Okay.
Okay? So that gives you some idea. So, yeah, you know. So basically, you know, we've been reduced by, you know, almost half.
Hey, Tony, one of the things that, that we haven't done in a long time is have one of these docket days. I talked to Kent and Lenny about that last week, to try to get a list to figure out how, how many cases we have pending.
A several, a couple of dozen, probably three dozen or more. Off the top of my head, yeah, forty somewhere.
It'd be good to go get a list of those because we haven't had a docket day in a year and, and.
No, we've been prohibited from doing that. I'm sorry?
I said, those are typically the bigger dollar for the city items is when that comes in. So y'all, please look at that and let Jared and myself know.
Well, I can tell you right now, Mayor, the emergency order prohibits us from doing that, and that goes through April first. I mean, I don't.
The, the governor's order today lifted masking and capacity and basically said Texas is back open for business.
Well, that's, that may be for business, that's not a court.
And understand how that plays out, but it's time to go get back in business.
Oh, well, I could, I could understand your position, but yes, and we can discuss this further, but the Supreme Court of Texas is, and the Office of Court Administration is, is very clear on that, irrespective of what Governor Abbott has said about it. And as, as a lawyer and a judge, I'm subject to that. And, and that and other reasons. I mean, the, the emergency order thirty-three entered the end of January is going to run through April first. I mean, the, the emergency order 33 entered the end of January is going to run through April 1st. And it's my belief and everybody that I talk to that things are going to start opening up shortly thereafter.
Okay.
So I mean, I'm hesitant for reasons related to safety and practicality to buck the Texas Supreme Court's order 30 days before, or 60 days before they're going to say, okay, under subject to these guidelines, courts can start having limited dockets. And so I'm not, I'm not quite clear. What about that isn't, isn't clear?
Okay. Well, what isn't clear to me is I don't know exactly which orders that he lifted today, but he had a list of them. So maybe Governor's Order Number 33 got rescinded today for all I know. Anyway, it came out at about 2:30 this afternoon. So I don't, you haven't had a chance to look at it probably. I certainly haven't had a chance to look at it in depth, but it is.
Okay, I thought you said you had.
We need to go look at it and say, did this change anything?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be sure and do that tomorrow. My off the cuff response is that no, it didn't because I'm sure that that applies to businesses only and not bill, government buildings. And, and I know that the last court order, that this is number 33, mind you, so they've been doing this. And I, I'm going to speak to Kent about it too, but it is to be effective through April 1st. So on April 1st, they're going to come out, they're going to say something, they're going to say, okay, this is they'll, they'll give us further guidance at that point. Until April 1st, this order number 33 is the law. But I will, I'll look into, I'll look into what Abbott issued today, and I'll certainly make a point to read that, and then we can chat some more about it.
That'll work.
Yeah, absolutely.
I wanted to ask, so like in other county, like say, for instance, like San Marcos, are they still having docket dates?
Uh, no, they're, they, they were for a short while and they're, they're back to Zoom. I've got, actually, and I don't, I don't do very much municipal court work at all myself, but I've actually got a Zoom hearing in San Marcos Municipal Court tomorrow.
So I understand that a lot of the court hearings are being, you know, done by, by Zoom.
They all are, yes.
So I, I thought we were doing conference call where you were doing that, taking care of it that way as well.
Yes, that's what we've been doing. And like I said, we're just, we wait until we've got enough to, you know, put in half a day's work. Okay. And then I coordinate my schedule with Mr. Wymer's schedule and, and, and the court schedule. Okay. And because we, like I said, we were just getting to the point where we think about, we need to do something and schedule another series of teleconferences, you know, or wait and see what happens in April. And I haven't made that decision yet. But that's, that is the plan. You're correct.
Any other questions out there in Zoom land?
Any others?
All right, Tony, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And you have the blotter with you, white kid, try to maybe answer a few questions if you have any that.
Question? 43, it says ALT cats from deceased, deceased residents on North River Road. What's ALT cats?
ATL is attempt to locate.
What is it?
Attempt to locate.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
We just to give, just to, so you understand what's going on there. We had a resident inside city die. He was, he lived alone. Passed away. When they finally got checked on, several days later, they moved him out, but he had two cats living with him. So this was us trying to go off and retrieve the cats. We got one. We don't know where the other one is yet.
All right, thanks.
Any other, any other questions? We unfortunately have had too many deaths in Markdale since the first of the year. There's been one that was a accident, alcohol involved accident in the middle of the night. And then we've had two of these two folks pass away due to natural causes or whatever. The last, last one's not quite cleared yet. They're working on. Anybody got any other questions?
No.
There was quite a lot going on over the, the, the cold weekend, et cetera. One of the things that, of course, Tech dot did was it, it stopped hazardous material traffic. Some people were questioning what was going on with the gas companies and the like, how come they weren't servicing folks? But it all boiled down to the road conditions for over this time. So anybody out there in Zoom land got a question? One, going on, it's going twice. Moving on to boards, we've got the historic commission. Anybody on Zoom land from the historic commission? Anybody? No. Parks, Dave, you want to talk about the parks?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be brief because I know we still have a full agenda, but I want to thank the mayor and Tommy Fudge for doing some clearing with the skid steer down in phase one. He cleared some of the debris and trees in the area of the new, newly marked boundaries of phase one. He also did some clearing in Al Hollow and has started to mow or shred the triangle there where the old dump used to be. I plan to have a meeting with the Parks Advisory Committee meeting before the next city council meeting, so I will discuss it at the end, end of the meeting to put it on the agenda for next month about discussion and possible action item of Guardiola Park and improvements that we foresee with the master plan that we will come up with and will ask again perhaps to have the water meter installed. So that'll be on the next month, and I am excited to have a meeting with the new Parks Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Can I add one quick point about the park? I want to thank TRPA for their 50th Annual Sam Marcus River Cleanup. And there was a lot of volunteers from the Sam Marcus River Ranch, about 20, 20 of us. And we picked, they picked a lot of trash up at phase one, lots of trash. We filled up a 16 foot trailer. They did find an old porta can in there and a couple of the stuff that was too heavy. So at one time, maybe we could get a, a backhoe or something in there and, and empty that, empty those out. I don't know if it's on city property or not, but they cleaned that whole bottom land up there, just to let you guys know. That's it.
So one of the things to consider with, with the parks board, you still have a substantial budget left, about $15,000 or so. In, in that development of that plan, if we need to bring in a landscape architect firm or somebody to help design concept drawings, if, if we get to that point later in the year and there's remaining funds, we can use our engineering contract to do that sort of thing. So if you want to bring us some outside help and expertise, if, if we don't have other use, proper uses for those funds, that, that could be possibly used within that parks budget.
You mean the money that's in the parks budget or in other budget?
The parks budget. So right now, the parks budget, right, so we're, we're not into the park season really. And so I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, but if we get into, as you go through the process into the spring and the summer, we get later into fiscal year, something to consider with, with your parks board is whether you want to bring on some advisors and landscape architect folks that, to help think through some of the things that you've come up with.
Could the engineering company that we've contracted with also draw a plans?
Yeah, the, when we hired the engineering firm, they have relationships, existing relationships with, with those people. So we, that's what we work through with our engineering firm to get to that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I, I think also Sam, like, if you wanted to check out Master Naturalist, you know, like from Fast Drop, I think, is like where they have their main one. Like they may be a free resource that could let you know about plants that would sustain in this area. And, you know, I think their knowledge would be real valuable too, like the Metronas Naturalist.
Yes, this freeze was really bad on cactus, agave, all the palm trees are dead. I'll still be looking in the parks and to see what trees have died as a result of this freeze. But all of us have seen because of the low temperatures that trees have died, oak trees have, have, have died, all the agave and cactus. So thank you for the suggestion of changing our, our landscape due to this inclement weather. Thank you.
The name of the company, Sonia?
It's just like the Metron, Master Naturalist. When we did a cleanup in, in Lockhart before, I mean, like they could tell you like what's good in the area, what's good by the rivers. Like this would thrive here, like, you know, they have species pertinent to the area that would thrive, you know, and they, they would be like a free resource. Like people can even become master naturalists in the area by taking their classes.
If, if I may for just a moment, I'm maybe reiterating, so correct me if I'm wrong, Sonia. But would it be possible for the Parks Committee to maybe even host some type of workshop specifically in regards to the plants and trees that we have here that were damaged as you described? Maybe have, you know, be it, be it, that it would be hosted via Zoom and you would have naturalists and or master gardeners. That would certainly be a really great public service right now.
Yeah, they could even, yeah, they could even like walk around and record it and, you know, just put it on, you know, whatever media format they'd like to. That way they could, you know, it would be an archive, archived.
All right. So that was just a, a question posed to the Parks Committee.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, does anybody else got anything for, for the Parks Movement? Moving on to planning and zoning, Lisa, you got anything you want to share with us?
No, sir. No, sir.
All right. And then moving on to the river board, I saw Charlie on there. Can you show his picture? Maybe he doesn't want.
No.
I didn't see Joy.
There you go. He's unmuted. He might be able to talk.
Charlie, can you talk to us? Or not? Probably taking a break. Just on the status of that, of course, after we went in and did the review of the historic commission and the Parks Advisory Board and the, and the planning and zoning ordinances and how they are appointed, approved or whatever, how you get members, Joy has been for several months now asked, reminded us that their first two year stint has been up. They have some that may, that, that are due to roll off. She doesn't necessarily have any, I think, that, that are begging to get off. But she's trying to go do it right. So we went off and got the ordinance that, that created this. And there's some questions in there about how many members and things. She's going to get back with me and talk about that. However, we did go make a call. We did, we did go put out a call for volunteers in the news from City Hall attached to the utility bills, and we also have one of the news flashes out there to, to call for people who want to volunteer. And so far, we have a sum total of nobody. So that's still an ongoing issue. If I need to get, we need to go back and re-review that ordinance and we'll put that on a future agenda item, I suppose, to go off and solidify the number of members and try to get that, and see if there's any more definitions on the timing associated with changes and how you go about doing that, just like we did with the historic commission.
Wouldn't it just seem like for the members and everything to be aligned with the other boards?
When we get there, we'll talk about it.
Yeah.
You know, I really, the, the big issue is, is the, this one was created to show us that all the, the working information is, is in appendix A. When you get to appendix A, what we provided them, the council provided to it was, hey, fill in the blank when you don't understand how many members they, they've got. And so I'm looking for how they did that. But in reality, that's pretty bad ordinance writing is what that is. And so we need to go back and get that fixed. And at that point in time, we can probably, you know, the council can debate how many members if they want to. I would recommend that the committee have a big say in this. I mean, if it's working for them, I don't want to necessarily mess them up.
Yeah.
And they are trying very hard diligently to follow open meeting laws and notifications and all of that. I'm, I'm out of that. They're probably one of the best that is doing that. All right, that brings us to agenda item seven, consent item.
I can talk about the river board if you'd like.
Who's there?
It's Charlie, Charlie Oles.
Okay, yeah. Talk to us, Charlie.
So we didn't have a meeting last month because of the weather and the rolling blackouts. So I really don't have approved minutes to talk about, but the previous month, I think, I think Joy had asked the city council to, if, if they could provide a list of some type of citations or contacts of littering in the river or around the river and specifically before the disposable container ban was implemented and after, to see if there's any, that we can get a correlation. So we, I think Joy asked for that, and I don't know if we've had anything back from the city council on that yet.
I think the answer to that is the city council is not going to know. We'll need to go get it out of the, out of the system if there is any. I think I know the answers, but I'm not going to speak until we go look at it.
Doesn't track that unless there was a citation issue. It would, the, the best source of that information would be to those, that those non-governmental organizations, volunteer organizations that do the litter pickup to see if they maintain any data on it. But the city doesn't have a, a litter control program where we catch those, nothing.
If, if we wrote citations, they'll be out there. We, we can go look, look for that. That's all.
I know that I asked before and it was a couple of months ago, and the answer was zero. There's been zero tickets. Now, from the time that I asked to now, if there's been any written, I'm not sure, but I know when I asked the question, it was zero. There's been no tickets written for littering, no tickets written for the ordinance. It's zero.
Okay, and that's, and that's fine. That, we just wanted the information. What we're thinking is that we would, we would like, not so much it has to be a citation to find somebody, but just a contact to say that disposable containers are not allowed on the river and the riverbank. And just a contact. And I, I think that would send a good message.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll take that, that advisory.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Charlie. All right, now let's move on to agenda item seven, consent items. We got a set of minutes from the January 12th meeting and the council.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes for January 12th, 2020, and the accounts payable. I make a motion that we accept the minutes for uh, January 12th, 2020 and the accounts payable.
Everybody want to second that?
I'll second it, Sam Quentin will second it.
Anybody got any questions, discussion? Going once, going twice. What say you, Sonia?
I abstain because I was absent that day.
Mike?
Yay, I accept.
And Lisa?
Sure, yes.
I didn't catch that one, yes. Say again, yes or no?
Yes, yes.
Okay, passes for. Four oh and one. Okay, that brings us to agenda item eight A. Eight A is our normal annual planned distribution of emergency fund money from from the general fund to the emergency fund. We've got to do this every year after we get the property taxes in. Uh, if y'all recall the budget, we still committed in the budget to put fifteen thousand dollars additionally into the emergency fund. The year-to-date interest already paid to the fund was seventy-five dollars through whatever day I did this, uh, I guess it was January or December, I don't know, uh. The expected interest for the rest of the year will be a hundred and fifty bucks, so you did the delta of that, between that and fifteen thousand, it's fourteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Interest is down, of course, because of uh, after COVID hit, they cut the fed rate down to zero again, and uh, it's been there for the past year, so it's very, very little interest coming in from those tax pools. So what I'm looking for is a tran- approval to transfer fourteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars from the general fund to the tax pool emergency fund.
I salute.
Anybody want to second it?
Oh, I second, I didn't hear the motion.
Yeah, Sonia made the motion, Jan seconded, Mike, how about you? Yay or no?
Yay.
Lisa?
Yes.
And Sam?
Yes.
Yes.
Passes four. Think we will make that happen. Uh, the next item was the capital improvement fund. Now, when we did the budget this year, there was a little bit of leftover of more revenue than expenses planned and then uh, we decided that uh, we were going to go ahead and sweep that into the capital improvement fund, long-term capital improvement fund, the amount was three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. Uh, and that's what we're ready to go do now. It doesn't say that at the, in the past years, we have been waiting to the end of the year, see how much is left over and then sweep the leftovers into there. They they came out a significant uh, amount of money each year. Uh, that's not to say that's not going to happen again this year, but we won't know until after the end of September, of course, as to how it all really plays out. But this was played into the budget for this three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars, so we can certainly do that right now. So anybody want to make a motion to do that?
I salute.
I second.
Sam?
Uh, well, just a quick question, so if it's transferred to the long-term capital improvement fund, we could say use that for the roads?
Yep.
Okay, uh, I say yes.
Mike?
Yay.
And Lisa?
Yes.
Motion passes. Alright, it's A, B, C. Alright, we're down to the big one for the night, discussion action on road selection for the long-term capital improvement fund. I put some history in here, I think everybody will remember this, but I wanted to write it down just to jog your memories. Back on, in December, of course, we we said it's time, we we had done the sweep of the funds into the long-term capital improvement fund. We've been waiting to get at least over a hundred thousand dollars before we tried to go off and repair a road. We got up to having a hundred and twenty-eight K and at that meeting, we, there was motion, uh, our prior meeting that we moved the money in there, so then it was time now to go off and A, decide on the road and and uh, which one we're going to repair and what we can do. At that that meeting, Mike asked about changing the process a little bit and use this asphalt overlay that they've used on uh, Old Martindale Road uh, and some others around here, and said, could we go look at that, uh, get Mr. Turk out there to do that? And that did happen in December. Mr. Turk came out, met with Mike and myself, uh, and looked at that, et cetera. So we reported that on the, at the one twelve meeting, uh, and once again reviewed the plan. Uh, Mike said, well, you know, we've looked at that, he agreed that the roads that had substrate damage, all these roads specifically in town where we put uh, sewers under.
Mr. Vinnie, I want to clarify my statement, I I said secondary roads in my email, I was saying, I would not, my my opinion that Lockhart is the, I think the road base, in my opinion, is stable. I'm talking about like Gonzales Street, I totally agree that that road has to be totally removed, that road base, I want that clarification.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay.
So, so at one twelve, we said, well, okay, let's go, let's go see, let's talk, Mike suggested we talk to the county guys who did this road, that old, old Martindale Highway. Have them also look at Lockhart Street, get another opinion as to whether or not that should or shouldn't, and we did that uh, in January. Mr. Leclerc came from the county road, uh, the county road supervisor, Mr. Serio was here, uh, my class, Mike was here, and so was I. We met them and talked, and they reviewed the road and, you know, Mike, you were there, I don't know whether you're going to agree with what what I heard, but but this is what I heard. The main issue with Lockhart Street is drainage, uh, that came from from Mr. Leclerc. Something needs to be done besides just an overlay to address the drainage issue. Now, his something was, we could just go scrape the high stuff along the edge somehow and and get it back away from the road, and then maybe this would would address some of that drainage issue. But he definitely said that we needed to go off and do something more on Lockhart Street than just the overlay.
Oh, hey, that is, I'm sorry.
The asphalt overlay process, of course, he also pointed out, that is a repair process, that is not a rebuild process. It'll add some life, it definitely would make it smoother, we'll all pat ourselves on the back and say, look at what we did to Lockhart Street, it's much better now than it was, but it is not going to last as long as actually rebuilding these roads, like we all agree.
But can I, can I be recognized, sir?
Good to see you. And he agreed to provide a cost estimate for the overlay process along Lockhart Street, which he did. Now, Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a long talk with with Donald uh, multiple times, I talked to him, uh, in fact, I talked to him yesterday. And uh, basically, he did agree that the edges are a problem, that an overlay could be done. And basically, what the problem is, the problem with our roads is, like he told me, they need to be chip sealed every five to seven years to to keep water ingress going into the substrate. So what he was telling me, you do the overlay and you wait, say, uh, six months up to a year, and then you put the chip seal on top of that. And he told me, now, it was not in writing, but he told me verbally that if you did an overlay, you sloped it properly off the crown, as long as the water stays off the road, it goes into the, so the edge of the road, as long as it's off the road, as long as you chip seal it within a year and you do every five to seven years chip sealing, that that road will last many, many years. And basically, the roads that we look on Lockhart Street have been here for, what, sixty, seventy years? And the problem is that the city did not do regular maintenance, applying, for example, chip seal every five or seven years. So he did say that it would be a viable repair on that, on Lockhart Street. Now, Gonzales Street, I totally agree, like I said, that is a totally removal of the base.
Okay, so we're we're we're, we're we're now down to where we're, we need to look at the cost associated with both of them. Um, the file we sent out, our daily work record was the one we got from Donald, uh, saying this is approximately, this will be about what it costs to do Lockhart Street. And you guys got that, I don't know if you can tell it up there, it was like seventy-seven and change, it was high seventy-seven, so seventy-eight.
And that's only for what?
That is just the the overlay process.
For just the?
For Lockhart Street.
From the Y all the way down or?
Uh, yeah, I I think it is, uh.
Yeah, it's two thousand feet.
The two thou- the two thousand feet runs from the, from Highway eighty all the way to the stop sign at, at Main Street. That's the estimate for that. Uh, we we marked off from the Y down, but it really goes from the light on the way, on that one side, it doesn't get to the other side. Anyway, this was a pretty rough estimate, he hadn't got down to it, the big cost of that is the amount of material that you look at.
Yeah, I got it.
Question?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Uh, uh, this, now Mike mentioned something about road repair versus road replacement. And he's saying this overlay and chip seal is more of a road repair. Now, is that included in our, in our uh, capital management, long-term capital management plan, the road repair?
Well, Jan.
It would qualify as a capital asset under our um, financial policy.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, that overlay, uh, Jan, is what the county does all over the county. If you go, if you go down a county road in Guadalupe County or Caldwell County, that's how they typically repair their county roads, is by an overlay, if you have a good road base, which we do on Lockhart Street in the center of the road, the edges are the problem. That's the problem, due to lack of applying a chip seal every five to seven years. This is not coming from me, this is coming from Donald, who is the road mate super superintendent, who knows a lot, a lot more about road repair than any of us does, that's what he does every day. And I picked his brain, and that's what, that's what they do in Caldwell County. And if it's good enough for Caldwell County, I think it's good enough for us, because we still have a problem with with the drainage, and I'll have, we're going to address the drainage issue even if we do rebuild the roads. So Jan, this is basically what you see, like at uh, Old Martindale Road by Three Dews Winery, they came in with an overlay over the existing road, which is very similar to our roads, and that was done almost two years ago, and it's holding up very well.
Okay, but it still does, but you said that it did not address the drainage issue, correct?
Yeah, but the, but if you look at the other documents, doing the rebuild, totally reap does not address the drainage issue also. We still have a drainage issue because we have no ditches here, we have no drainage. That's the problem with Martin, that we do not have.
We don't have a lot of, we don't have a lot of elevation change either.
Let's uh, let's, let's wait to talk about the other one until we get to the other one.
Okay.
The only, only piece that we need to talk about here, uh, on this, this slide from Donald was, I mean, he gave us all the labor hours, et cetera. The point I was trying to make was, it's down there at the bottom where you see material, out of the seventy-seven thousand, sixty-six, five of that is material. So uh, the 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 big trick there is, is that there's, the labor's a smaller portion of 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 the prepared cost than the material. That's it.
So is that how much Caldwell County will cover for us?
Well, you saw his, his email to us, uh, in the box on the prior slide, it says, uh, to repair Lockhart Street, the cost would be somewhere in this same range. So he's, it's kind of rough, but uh, his cost to do that. Now, he doesn't have it, that doesn't include some more labor to go off and uh, clean off the sides and get it ready for him. And it doesn't include uh, whatever thinking will have to do with Thomas and uh, and the engineering guys on how do you go address everybody's driveway and and how you go do that. We, I haven't seen any kind of plans on on what that would happen yet. But if we were going to do that, I would recommend uh, some, some, let Thomas come out here and look them over and and make sure they know exactly how we'll address people's driveways in the intersection of Crockett and Bowie, because those are going to get significantly changed if we, if we go do the overlay. So, you know, county cost is seventy-eight thousand, he says, then there's going to be a little bit more on top of that, and you get two thousand feet fixed. And however long it lasts is is how long it lasts. Now, while we were, we also said at the two, one and twelve meeting, that we were going to go, try to go see if we could do Gonzales Street, the six hundred foot section, which is between Bowie and Crockett, and then the four, or the four hundred foot section that's between Crockett and Main Street. And Thomas went off and looked at those, and I'm going to turn this over now to him in his presentation, you guys got that the other day. To to walk through that. And are you there, Mr. Turk? I see you. You're going to have to take your, there you go.
I am, how is Martin doing tonight?
We're good.
Thank you.
Uh, Jared, can you uh, can you put up my uh, PowerPoint presentation?
Yep, there you go. Alright.
I don't see it yet, oh, there we go, alright, yeah, go ahead and advance the slide, please. To the next page.
We might have a little bit of a lag.
Okay, thank you. So I did a pavement condition analysis on Lockhart Street all the way from eighty uh, down to uh, Main Street. It's approximately two thousand feet, the width is somewhere average around twenty to twenty-two feet, in some places it's more, some places a little less. Uh, and is, as y'all, I'm sure are aware, uh, the terrain is is very flat, very flat. And I included this topographic map on purpose. Because I, I wanted you, your, uh, for all of you who are aspiring amateur engineers, uh, the road basically goes uh, parallel to contours, which means it's very, very flat. Uh, there's only about two feet of fall between one end uh, and the other. So uh, uh, that is a clue to one of the problems as far as drainage is, is just so flat that water within your right of way uh, just has trouble traveling along the road and getting out. The other drainage problem that you have is, is you have quite a bit of uh, storm, stormwater runoff that that comes from the west and travels to the road. Uh, and once it hits the road, uh, whatever ditches you might have, that gets intercepted and it somehow makes its way uh, across. So you have two very significant uh, drainage problems that contribute to the condition of your road. Uh, if you don't mind, will you advance to the next page?
We might be having a little bit of a lag, but we're we're showing the existing pavement condition.
Okay, there we go, thank you. So um, what I saw out there, uh, the 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 uh, the most prevalent uh, pavement condition is the edge failures. And that's really directly related to uh, poor drainage. You have uh, water that struggles to get off the pavement, once it gets off the pavement, just kind of, it just kind of sits in that green area, that landscape area uh, on the edge of the pavement, it doesn't run off, so uh, so your subgrade and your base material gets wet and it gets soft, uh, and the pavement fails because of it. uh, and the pavement fails because of it. Uh, there is also some alligator cracking, and there are some potholes, but the prevalent failure is, is on your edge. Uh, and as I said, the edge failures is primarily due to poor drainage, but it's also got something to do with your wheel loading. Your pavement is so narrow that people who drive on the pavement, their wheels are very close to the edge, where it is soft. Uh, so because your pavement is narrow, it's contributing to the, uh, the failure of the pavement. Uh, let's see, can you scroll down a little bit?
Fix me the next slide.
Move to the next slide then, thank you. So, um, this next slide is basically a summary of what I would do if you asked me to overlay that pavement. Basically asphalt overlays extend the life of the pavement. Uh, it requires a suitable base material. And I think this is an area where Mike was right. Um, you've got a couple of feet on each side of the pavement that's weak and failing, but the middle fifteen or sixteen feet seems to be in pretty good condition. Don't see an awful lot of longitudinal cracking, don't see an awful lot of alligator cracking. These are all indications that, you know, the base material's okay. Uh, so what I would do is, I would do some pavement repair. And basically I would come in there and mill out a couple of feet of pavement on each side, and I would repair that. I would come back in with asphalt material. I would patch any potholes that exist. I would patch any alligator cracking areas that exist. Uh, and then, uh, before I did the asphalt, I'd come in with level up. Now, level up asphalt is, is a very, very thin layer of asphalt in specific locations that kind of fill in all the dips and makes things really smooth before we come in with the asphalt. And then I would come in with a tack coat, which is a really sticky oil, that the asphalt that you place down sticks to whatever surface is there. And then I would come in with the asphalt overlay, which I would recommend about two inches. Now, um, the county obviously gave us some very good information as far as costs, uh, but I didn't really have enough information to make an apples and apples comparison. I can, I can say that what I am recommending here is, is, is more than what they typically do. Uh, but this approach is, is specifically designed for Lockhart Road. Uh, what the county does is what, what they typically do, you know, out in the, out in the county. Some of these, uh, some of these repair approaches, they, they may or may not have this capability. They, they may or may not have it in the cost estimate, I'm, I'm just not sure. It's obvious that the county cost estimate is lower than the, I think I estimated it cost at about a hundred and fifty thousand. It's definitely lower, but I'm not sure if it includes all that really needs to be done. Uh, and if you went in there and asked-
Didn't include that first bullet of mill and replace edge failures. He, he talked about not, you know, he, he, actually Donald on that day mentioned that, that that would be his recommendation as well to go do that, but that wasn't part of the, what he estimated. It was just to come in there and, and put it down after some cleaned up the edges.
Yeah, and, and on the left-hand side of this slide, uh, there's a, there's a road near my home in Fort Worth, where they're about to do an overlay, and that's exactly what they did. They came in, they milled out a couple of feet of the edge, and they came back in with asphalt. Uh, and that's a, that's a picture showing you what I think needs to be done. And on the right-hand side, you'll see a, a level up. And it's just a really thin, uh, layer of asphalt that, that kind of fills in all the voids and makes things, uh, really smooth before they come back in with the, with the new asphalt. So, you know, when it comes to Lockhart Street, you have two approaches. Uh, you know, one is an asphalt overlay with, you know, the county kind of doing a minimum, be recommending a little bit more, and then you have a, you know, complete rebuild. Both approaches work, uh, both approaches have, have different costs, and both approaches, uh, have, you know, different pavement life. One is not any better than the other. It just comes down to how much do you want to spend and what you will get out of it. The, uh, the approach of coming in and doing some level up and coming in with a, with a asphalt overlay is very common, very common out in the county, very common in municipalities, municipalities of your size. So, um, it, it's a perfectly acceptable approach. Um, it's just down to how much you want to spend and, and what you expect to figure for it. Will you advance to the next slide, please? There we go. Uh, yeah, this slide, I just, uh, tried to summarize some of the advantages, disadvantages of asphalt overlay versus full depth reclamation. Uh, asphalt overlays obviously cost less than full depth reconstruction, and it, it takes a shorter amount of time to do, and it's less impact, you know, on the traveling public and the adjacent landowners. The disadvantage is, is you're not, you're not solving your drainage issues. You're not fixing the root cause of what's causing your pavement failures. Uh, and the, the pavement life for an asphalt overlay, and I'm, and I'm going by my seat of the pants here, is anywhere from five to ten years. Uh, I think the county overlay, as, as I understand it, is probably a, a life of less than five years.
Mr. Turk, can I have a question, sir? Mr. Turk, can I have a question?
Go right ahead, go right ahead, sir.
I did talk to Donald several times, and he, he did put the importance of a chip seal every five to seven years. And in his opinion, as long as we did a, a, a five to seven year chip seal over the, over the overlay and keep it as a maintenance issue, that that would extend the lifespan. He said for, for many years. He didn't give me an exact year, but he did recommend a chip seal over that to prevent water ingress and to keep, that's, that's what he told me. Okay, thank you.
I, I, I agree with a lot of what he's saying. A, a chip seal is what we call a wear course. Uh, so, uh, it's, it's a layer of oil and rock on top of the asphalt. It does a very good job of repelling water and making it run off. And, and it's a good friction course for, for cars and tires on the pavement itself. Uh, but it has no benefit whatsoever to the, to the underlying supporting base material. And if that base material is bad because of drainage, then whatever's on top of it is eventually going to fail. Uh, so I, I agree with much of what he says, uh, but the, the chip seals themselves don't necessarily solve all your problems. Plus, a chip seal is about half the cost of an overlay. So, doing that every five to seven years is a significant cost, although it is pretty beneficial.
He did, he verbally, he did tell me it was about twenty thousand dollars for Lockhart Street. He gave me a verbal figure, an estimate. Okay.
Uh, if you'll advance to the next slide, please? Yeah, uh, this was, um, this is just a summary of, uh, my cost estimate of what it takes to overlay, uh, Lockhart Street. I, I estimated about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for pavement repair, pavement preparation, and then two inch overlay. And of course, the county's cost data was about seventy-eight thousand, and I believe that covered about a mile of road, according to the, uh, to the mayor's odometer. And, uh, um, and, and they've said, you know, that the, the would be comparable to Lockhart Street, but probably on the low side, because a few more things would have to be done. Uh, if you'll advance to the next slide, please? Thank you. Uh, and the next two slides are just kind of a, a summary of, uh, information on Gonzales Street. So from Crockett to Bowie, uh, what, uh, what the council wanted was a complete reconstruction of the, of the road. It's about six hundred, uh, feet. Uh, and that would be new asphalt, new base, and new curb. My updated cost estimate for that work is around ninety thousand dollars for construction. Uh, we estimate the engineering to be about twenty-eight thousand dollars. And we've set aside about ten thousand dollars just in contingency, in case something happens that's unexpected for a total project cost of about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, which I believe is more or less your current budget. If you'll advance the slide, please?
Oh, wait, before we get off of that one, that one does include the, the, the concrete ribbons down the side, correct?
That is correct, that is the curbs. We have curbs on either side.
Okay, and Mike, earlier you, you said, well, wait a minute, we're not fixing the drainage along Gonzales Street either. And, and, and you're absolutely right, we are not fixing the drainage. What we're doing with this concrete ribbon is we are, we are, because it's much more costly to fix the drainage issue in flat areas with no outlet to, to the world, you, you'd have to put it subterranean, right? You'd have to put in a, a, a street gutter, a, a street sewer system. So without doing that, the way to address the drainage issue is to strengthen the edges. And that's what the concrete ribbon does. It gives you a much tougher edge than what we have today. And that's, that's why we did that, or why we've been suggesting that that's the right answer for Martinville, is, is because it does address the problems created by lack of drainage. It, I agree with it, it doesn't fix the drainage problem. That's a very costly thing to go off of.
Very well said, ma'am.
Yeah.
Very well said.
Mike?
Uh, the only comment I have is the county does not do a ribbon. They, when they do their overlay, I have not seen a ribbon, ribbon applied. That's just my opinion.
Most of those areas is because they have adequate roll-off into some, even six or eight inches lower of the surrounding county. They got a drainage ditch the same. If we had that, we, we actually said, when we were looking at the whole city, there are, are some roads that don't have that, that, that have adequate drainage ditches on the side, specifically out there in Butterfly Meadows and Hobson Ranch. They've got some pretty hefty, hefty, uh, ditches.
I'd agree with that.
South Florida Road has a, has an opportunity for that. Uh, so those, we actually, Mark said, no, we're not going to go put that ribbon in there. But for the areas that we felt like were going to be extremely costly to go off and address drainage, because we couldn't do it, what we did is, is we, we figured out some way to attack it anyway, without actually putting the same-
Lisa, would you try to say just on the- Yeah, yes, sir, just, just on the Butterfly Meadows and Hobson Ranch, um, the, the type of drainage that they have was, um, part of the development standards when that subdivision was developed in the first place. So that's the reason that they do. And then, uh, the other statement I want to make in regards to out in the county, they do not have concrete ribbons. But yet we are looking at and proposing to do it in the city. That's because it's in the city and not in the county.
Also, they're, they have wider roads. And so what, what Thomas was talking about, I mean, go down Lockhart Street. If you have another car coming towards you, one of you has backed off the road to pass each other. Um, and just that, day after day, you're going to tear up the edges as well.
Well, Jared, in, in my opinion, again, I'm talking to my opinion, Lockhart is priority, because you're not going to have a head on in Gonzales Street, and there's very little traffic.
Oh, no, I was expecting the, the, the reason why there wouldn't be concrete edges-
I understand.
-needed on a wider road.
I, I'm just, I understand, but I have seen county roads where it's flat, where there's no ribbon and they don't have adequate, they don't have adequate drainage. I'm just telling you what Donald told me, as long as you keep the water off the road, that you, you, you have longevity. You know, if it pulls on the road, then you got a problem. But if you have enough slope and it goes off the road, and it goes off the road, that does prevent the damaging the edge of the road. That's what I was just told by Donald, and, and that's just my observation. But I'm just saying, I totally agree with Gonzales Street. That, that road's an absolute disaster, it's a mess. Okay, thank you.
Uh, I had a question real quick about Crockett to, to Bowie then. Are you saying, so sir, the, the major problem there also is that the sewer line has sunk down? And so that's why we have that wide rut in the, in the road there?
I think he's asking, Thomas, I think he's asking you, but, but the answer is that, yes.
Yes, okay. Yeah, okay.
Yes, uh, it looks to me like-
Okay, Thomas, you're back off.
It looks to me, you know, the, uh, the backfill of the trench wasn't done very well, and, and so it's failing and it's, uh, it's showing up in the pavement. So, it's certainly contributing to the bad condition of the street.
And it is caved in several times.
Good to know, thank you.
Hello?
Yeah, Jan, you got something?
Yes, I, I just need a clarification about what this concrete ribboning, ribbon is.
It's, uh, it's a basically, it's, it's basically a curb, but it's, it's flush with the pavement. Uh, and what the concrete curb does is it gives it a nice, strong edge. And that asphalt is constructed right against that edge, uh, and it's able to resist the forces that are produced by car tires. And pavements last a lot longer when you have curb.
So that example that you showed in your county, where you live, that picture, that's, was ribboning, ribbing, ribbon?
No, no, ma'am, that is a, that's a typical county road in Comal County. Uh, there's no ribbon curb. Uh, and you can tell, uh, you have edge ditches as well, because there is no curb.
It looks, it looks similar, where there was black, it would be gray, and where, where, and it would be concrete instead of asphalt.
Jan, in, in the old DCS-
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm learning here.
Yeah, in, in the old DCS presentation, we, we, we went over that again. I don't know, it's been-
I can't remember.
Last fall, November or whatever, there was a picture of that. Jared's looking to see if he can get you-
Okay, that's okay, I'll go back and look at the, that, that was in November?
I, I, well, I don't remember exactly where it was. It was either, when did we start the-
Right, I know.
When we had to go vote again. It was in that meeting, so it was, I think it was November, December, one of those two things. It wa- it was the, the presentation from DCS, and there's a picture in there of roads with concrete ribbons on them.
Okay.
All right, let's-
Let's move on.
While we're here, let's go to the next.
Next slide? Yeah, the next slide is, is simply the same summary of what for the road segments of Gonzales between Crockett and Main Street. You keep in mind that the ex- You keep in mind that the existing street today, uh, much of it exists outside of your existing right of way. Uh, and so, uh, there's a need to realign that road back into your right of way. It would be the same approach, new asphalt, new base material, uh, and new, uh, curbs. The construction cost estimate is somewhere around fifty four thousand. Engineering would be about twenty three thousand. Again, we've got some contingency. Total construction cost is about, uh, eighty seven thousand. And when, uh, the mayor and I, uh, spoke about these cost estimates, we realized that, uh, we realized that we really couldn't afford to do both of them, uh, like the council wished. So we put, uh, to kind of help you, uh, decide what to do.
Does everybody got that? I mean, when, when last we left the heroes, I was hoping that maybe about some miracle would happen somewhere and the, the prices would get close enough to where we could do both pieces. But Thomas has convinced me with a lot of strong questions about moving telephone poles and, and what about the substrate and a bunch of other stuff that it, our budget of a hundred and twenty eight K was not going to go cover both of those. So we've morphed this in now to the, to the next, next slide or next piece of this. So let's go back to this one now. So, so we, we had tried to think whether we could get all of it done. As it comes down to it, it looks like you got to pick one, two, or three here, one of these, these solutions. I will say the only wrong answer for Martindale is to do nothing. It is time to go spend the money that we laboriously save to go fix some streets, to go fix the dead gum streets, okay? You've seen the estimates, uh, he could do the six hundred foot stretch. We think we can do the six hundred foot stretch of Bowie to Crockett along, of Gonzalez between Bowie and Crockett and fit within the budget. He went so far, I, I asked him to go create a task order that covers that. That's the twenty eight thousand dollars. That's the third bullet up there. We sent out his, the, the task order three with this. It was a, I think it was a P D S, but you got that?
Yes. Good point.
Yes.
Yeah. For everybody to try to look at, it's, it's the type of things that, that our contract with Mr. Turp require us to go do. It, it, as he writes down, uh, what he'll go do for that amount of money and tells us what, you know, what's not in it and that's all in there. If anybody's got any questions of that, uh, now's the time probably to ask them.
Uh, Mr. Devaney, can I do my, my last sales pitch?
Sure.
Okay. Well, uh, let's look at it. Lockhart Street is two thousand feet. Gonzalez Street is four hundred feet. Gonzalez is six hundred feet. So the most bang for the buck is definitely the two thousand feet for Lockhart. And the most important thing is it's the most traveled road in, in Martindale. Gonzalez is a secondary road. There's very little traffic. And for a safety concern, I think we need to do the overlay. And for the citizens of Martindale, we need to do the right thing and have our main, our main thoroughfare done in an overlay, which the county does. And it's good enough for the county, it's good enough for Martindale, in my opinion. Thank you.
Has anybody got any questions about task order three?
Uh, yes. I, I had a question about the easement that might have to be obtained by the city of Gonzalez Street beside the home that's there. Um, I understand that that part portion of Gonzalez could be private property.
Uh, to widen it at that end, this is, this is what, what, what Sam's talking about is at the intersection of Gonzalez and Crockett, the home that's previously owned by Miss, Mr. and Mrs. Schmidt, that is currently owned by Mari Domingo Domingos. When you look at our Comal County maps, a chunk of that is, that's not, that's the six hundred foot section.
Correct. It's that first section, okay.
Uh, that in, at the intersection of Crockett and Gonzalez, their property actually extends out into the current, uh, roadway slightly. So their fence is backed off a little bit, uh, into their property, but, but, but according to the Comal County CAD maps, it looks like. Uh, you, we would have to go buy a sliver or get him to sign over it or probably replat the thing and, and get, get that straightened up. And Mr. Turp put that into, uh, some of the costs associated with, with, with doing that. That's the, that's the words associated with the property. What, what, what'd you say?
Easement.
Easement, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Isn't that called prescriptive use? Is that considered prescriptive use?
No, they, they, it looks like the existing road narrows down to about twenty feet when you get to the intersection of Crockett. Uh, the street narrows down as well. So I don't see the existing pavement encroaching into, uh, private lands. Uh, it's, it looks like it's within the right of way. It's just very narrow. And, uh.
Wouldn't, wouldn't matter.
But what the city desires in a twenty foot wide street, uh, there's just simply not enough right of way to do that. And we would have to acquire another, uh, ten or twenty feet of, of right of way to accomplish that. So, uh, uh, that's factored into the twenty three thousand dollar figure for.
Jan, it wouldn't.
Well, that's what that comes from.
Jan, it wouldn't necessarily matter if it, it, one, to, to, to have a prescriptive easement run or period run, one has to claim a hostile right against someone else, tell them that I've taken this, this is mine, I'm using it. And the other person has to rebut that. And in, in the absence of that kind of scenario, you can't begin to run a prescriptive period.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Back to the question at hand, has anybody got anything they want to ask about task order three? We didn't do one for the section between Crockett and Bowie, and we haven't done one for whatever tasks would have to do with Lockhart Street, but that would be a step if we decide one of those two is the real choice. Go on once. Lisa, you got anything on that you want?
Sir, when you say task order three, you're talking about number three, what's on the screen?
Anybody understand that?
I didn't understand.
I'm sorry.
Number three on the screen.
Are you saying that's number three on the screen that you're talking about?
Yes.
It's the bullet, the third bullet.
So you can pull that.
Oh, what, this is a question of task order?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's the, it's the document that.
It's called task order three. Yet came out with your Rita heads on Friday.
Right.
I guess I just don't have that or if, if, is that what's on the screen right now?
That's on the screen right now. You have to let it.
I have, have not seen that particular document. I'm going to find it.
So Mayor, what I, what I wanted to just clarify right now is like with the, I know we've been talking about Gonzalez to, um, to Crockett. We've been talking about, um, you know, the, the road right there from the Y all the way down. But like with the amount of money that we have, don't we need to like narrow it down to one road or a couple of roads?
We're, we're narrowing it down to one.
Okay.
So there's three choices that we, that we've come down to, to spend the hundred and twenty eight K or a portion there. One of them is the, that section that's on the screen right now of Gonzalez. That's from Maybes House up there on the left, down to Crockett Street on the left. That'll be a hundred and twenty eight K. The option that Mike proposing is to go off and do Lockhart Street, not use the concrete ribbon process, not go rebuild it, just repair it with this asphalt overlay process. You get two thousand feet versus six hundred feet and you probably come in a little less than a hundred and twenty eight K. We don't know for sure, but we know it runs somewhere between the seventy eight that, that Donald's given us, or we're pretty sure it runs somewhere between seventy eight that Donald's provided us and the hundred and fifty that Mr. Turks provided us.
Okay. And then it was seventy eight thousand and then it's going to be, uh, how much every five years? Did you say a clock?
What's that?
How much is it every five years?
Well, he, Donald, Donald recommend, you know, once we do the overlay, he said it needs to set for about six months, up to a year to let the, uh, solvent, to release solvent entrapment. And then you put the chip seal on it to prevent it from water ingress. So you would wait, you would wait and then put the chip seal, which would, would, would help the longevity of the road. And he said approximately twenty thousand additional. However, you could do that the next year in your budget for your road budget. You following me?
Uh, I, I would, I would add, uh, that if the asphalt is well done, that a chip seal shouldn't be necessary for five or six years.
Okay.
That asphalt is waterproof. And if it, if you brought in level up and you shaped the base material, uh, you could go, uh, a long time without having to come in with a chip seal.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
And would we have right of way issues? Cause I, if, if it's twenty two feet in width, I don't, for a main city road, I don't think that would be widening. And you're probably, they're probably.
More than what you got today, so.
No, but I, we probably need about twenty four feet in width at, at a minimum for that road. And so we're looking also at, at some minor, but still present, um, right of way issues there.
I don't know. I had, I hadn't, I hadn't studied the width on here.
So I think.
I'm kind of with you.
Jared, check and see if my math is right. So for, in twenty years, we would do the payment of the seventy eight thousand and plus another eighty thousand to maintain. So the road and we would be ending up spending about a hundred and fifty eight thousand?
Roughly, roughly. And if, if, if the assumptions are that you, the edge retention is, is, is stable enough that it remains. And so that's correct with certain set of assumptions. Um, if you have three overlays and, you know, one done, three overlays, that gets you to twenty years, that, that, that could, that could hold. Uh, but you're. It's, it's that risk you have of, is it going to fail? You have no, you don't know if or when it's going to fail. And what's the plan is, what the plan will be to, to address it in a long-term way.
And it's the overlay versus the rebuild.
Right.
Hey, Jared, let me make a.
I have a question.
Let me make a one other comment here. The current situation is extremely dangerous on Lockhart Street right now. There's, there's hardly any, there's less than twenty feet probably in width. And there's the potential for a head on. And I think it's extremely critical that we at least, you know, we got to get these, this Lockhart Street is a real issue, especially when it rains, you can't see the potholes. And, uh, I think it's a really dangerous situation right now, Lockhart Street. That's just my personal opinion.
I, I would agree with that, that the, the width of the road, especially when there's rain and if we're trying to dodge puddles and dodge potholes and someone else is dodging puddles and potholes, there ain't enough road there for the bulk of you.
Yes. So it's kind of a critical time right now.
And I, uh, I believe that with the use of the, um, eighteen wheelers that, you know, tend to like use that area a lot, that that contributes to it also.
Especially by Taco Food.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd expect, yeah.
I have a question for Thomas.
Yeah.
Uh, on a, on a full depth, uh, reconstruction, uh, is there any maintenance for it? You said it's going to last anywhere from twenty plus years. Is there any ra, regular maintenance that you have to do on a full depth reconstruction?
Uh, the answer is yes. Uh, if the road is constructed well, uh, that maintenance should be minimal. Uh, first, uh, ten year, probably limited to just some crack sealing. Uh, and then after that, you, you may have to be a little more aggressive in your maintenance and, and repair some potholes, you know, spot areas where, where it might be failing. Uh, but, uh, you should be able to get, uh, more than twenty years of pavement life without having to spend an awful lot of money at all. Uh, I'd, I'd like to add to Jared's comment about the, the width. Uh, Lockhart Street is essentially, uh, your arterial that it comes down from eighty into the downtown area. Uh, the absolute minimum width that I would recommend is about twenty four feet, but I really, really like to see that to be about thirty. Um, I'm not sure there's enough right of way to properly build a thirty foot wide, uh, street. Uh, so, uh, please consider that in your decision. If you overlay, uh, you're not changing the geometry, you're paving over what is there and it's going to stay, you know, at twenty to twenty two feet wide.
And the edges are going to deteriorate.
Again?
Yeah.
That's what.
Yeah, if you, if you.
It's a question.
If, if you take the county's approach, the, if you take the county's approach to the road, the, the, the edge failures will reoccur. Uh, if you do the mill and removal and replacement of the edges like I've, uh, suggested, uh, I think you'll get a lot more life out of that pavement.
Well, that's your, Mr. Turp. That's your personal opinion and you're an expert. I'm not, but I'm just going with the county told me, what Donald told me, who's an expert himself. And he tells me those, those overlays are holding up extremely well in their county and they have eighteen wheelers using those roads too. So I, that's just your, I mean, we, we really don't know, but I'm saying is I'm going by what I've seen in the area and the overlay has worked very well for the county.
Can you do overlay on dirt? So, so the edge of the road right now, if we're at twenty feet, our road needs to be twenty four, you have about four feet in width that's not going to be accounted for. You can't overlay on dirt.
Well, it's a lot better than we got now because we don't even have twenty feet right now, you know?
Right.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying folks, this is the best, this is, this is, I mean, my opinion, this is the most critical road. And if we could do it for less than, if we can do it for seventy eight thousand dollars and fix the problem, that's going to benefit the citizens more than anything else on Gonzales Street. I mean, that road's hardly used, like I said before.
If we fix the width, the, the projected costs, including address, addressing those width issues and, and other, you know, pavement methods.
On Lockhart?
That we have here is a hundred and fifty. So really that, that eighty thousand dollars, seventy eight thousand dollars really is a misnomer. And I, I would advise council to not consider that number if, because it doesn't address the width issues of that roadway.
Well, maybe we need to get a little more information on that before we vote on it then. I mean, maybe, maybe we need to have more of a, more, more solid numbers before we make a, make a vote on there because, I mean, it's, it's a lot more bang for the buck and it fixes the, and the, and the best thing about it is it can be done quickly. Uh, I, I just, I just don't see the benefit of doing Gonzales Street because it's very, got, got very, very little traffic. Lockhart is the critical road. If we can do that to make it safer and it works for the county, it'll work for us. I mean, that's, that's what I got to say. And if maybe, maybe we can see what the extra cost would be to widen the road, possibly if we could widen the road. And maybe we could add that to the, to that bit.
Uh, well, why, why not, why, why not go for a complete rebuild?
We can't afford it, Jan, on Lockhart Street.
Well, um, I mean, there, we need twenty two thousand dollars. How long will it take to get with what we're contributing? How much are we contributing each month?
But what do you mean?
Now, we haven't priced out a rebuild, Jan.
Oh, well, he.
Now, this. Now, this, this is, he, this is a hundred and fifty thousand dollar repair potentially versus, uh, for two thousand feet, it's two thousand feet. If we, if he was gonna go do what, what we were proposing on, on Gonzalez Street, uh, the, the, the addresses, trying to stop the edge deterioration, et cetera, that, I don't know what that number is, but it's significantly more than that. So, so, uh, the choices that, that we've come down to is, is we could, we can afford one of the, any one of these three things. We can go rebuild Gonzalez Street, which addresses, and that's a full rebuild, which is, addresses caving-in sewer lines and creating a street that, that the citizens can look at and say, okay, why don't you do that in my neighborhood or whatever, you know? It gives them something that, that, that says, okay, we're making, w- w- we're making moves for the long term. But it uses up the hundred and twenty-eight K. We could go in and do a repair to Lockhart Street with the asphalt overlay activity, like Mike wants to go do. It doesn't address the edge drainage issue, but it does make it, I mean, people are gonna say, boy, y'all did a good thing to help us fix up Lockhart Street. Kind of for the next few years, and then they're, we're gonna be back at, looking at.
Well, Mr. Devini, now, Mr. Devini, now, I was told different by Donald that that's a viable repair, and if it's done properly with an overlay, it can last a lot longer than a few years, as long as it's maintained. Uh, with a chip, whatever, even, even Mr. Turk said, we didn't need to put a cheap seal, a chip seal, but if it's a done properly overlay, it can last many years. So that, that's it, that's two years, I think, is not in it, is on accurate statement, but I will.
I said, s- s- some years sooner than, than if you did a full rebuild.
Um, okay, what I'm saying is what I was told from Donald, I, I spoke to Donald a lot, and they've had very good luck with those, with that overlay, and it's lasted very well. And maybe the county, I think the county could maybe give us a record of that, of how I know the one by three dudes is going on two years and it looks great. So that's, that's what I'm saying.
Uh, well, I, I'll say about Lockhart Street and what Jared has mentioned is that it is too narrow for two cars to go by, but if we go with the asphalt overlay for seventy-eight thousand, even with the hundred and twenty-eight that we have, we could allocate a little more money by getting another bid, say, from the county for some mill repair, as they've said, and improve the edges a little bit, not to make it extremely wider, much wider, but to at least make the edges more firm, and then put the asphalt overlay. I, I would like to see the difference between the seventy-eight and the one-twenty-eight applied to Lockhart Street. That's all I gotta say about that. Thank you.
Anybody else got any comments on all of this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Lisa.
Um, I just would like to let me, thank you. Pardon my voice. Um, I would just like to let it be known, those of us who, um, went through this painstaking survey, opinion process, and engineering process several years ago, it was brought to our attention very, very well, that if you do not, based on whether it be the base or the, the subbase or the kind of soil we have, if we do not secure the asphalt, it will get repaired on the edges, whether we are around to do that or the next group of folks are around to do that. What we've been thinking about in the future, looking into the future of the city, was to begin to save our money so that we could make a long-term improvement, not a mandate. The other part that I would like to make certain that everyone is underst- understands is that there are right-of-way issues all over the city. Area that need to be cleaned up. This is an opportunity, I mean, whether it's Lockhart Street or Gonzalez Street, quite frankly, I don't care. I don't care which path that Lockhart Street is that main arter- arter- arterial street, and I definitely think that that needs to be done. But if I'm gonna vote for it, I want it to be done right. And, 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 and I absolutely cannot get on board with, if it's, if it's good for the county, it's good for us. We're not the county, it is different. The, the road is different, the, the traffic is different. So.
Well, well, Lisa, the county's got a lot better roads than we've got, and they have a lot more traffic on them.
Well, I, I'm kinda with Lisa on this, Mike, because I, I, I think it's, I, I feel like a total rebuild would be better.
You can't afford it, Jan.
I know, but, uh, you know.
Let's, let's think about this, folks. I've been on council over two years, and we've, we've come a long way. Mr. Devini's come a long way. You know, with, with the previous mayor, we were putting roadbase in potholes, you know, that, and then we wasted almost twenty thousand dollars. I mean, come on, we need to do something for the citizens. And I think that would be a great statement to do an overlay, like the county. And the county roads are fine around here, and I think that would be the best thing for that money spent. And like Mr. Clinton said, use additional money of, above that seventy-eight thousand to make a better edge or a wider road or whatever, but that's our main entrance. I mean, this, again, going back to Gonzalez Street, it's a secondary road, very little, how much traffic goes through Gonzalez Street?
It's only if the road collapses, it doesn't matter. It's more than I have to fix.
It, it is the worst road in the, in the town, but, you know, I'm kinda with Mike on this. It, it, you know, there's.
Jan, Jan, how many times do you go down Gonzalez Street? I never go down Gonzalez Street. I go down Lockhart Street all the time.
I ride my bike down there a lot, but.
Yeah, well, your bike, okay. I'm just saying, look at the money, just look at what we got to work with. And, you know, I would love to have the, the curb and the, all that, it'd be great if we had that, but we don't have the money. And come on, look at the roads now, let's do the right thing and get something done that benefits all the citizens, not just a few.
Okay, Mike, you've had your.
I know, I appreciate what you've done, Mike.
Now, I'm gonna make, I get to make my speech now. Again, I think we've spent three and a half years trying to gather up money to go off and do a road for Martin Dale. I personally think it's an injustice if we go repair instead of replace and actually rebuild, that we, whether we do it for Gonzalez, six hundred feet of Gonzalez Street, uh, this year or Lockhart Street, as long as we go make some kind of change, we need, it's time to go off and go do that. But I don't believe in painting a wall when it cracked because the foundation is failing, and I believe that that's what we'll be doing if we go in there and, and try to do this overlay thing to Lockhart Street. There's no doubt it's the busiest one in town. It would be, if we had enough to go do it all and do it with a full repair, I would be all for that one, I would be the right one to go do. But with a hundred and twenty-eight K, I think we set out on a task that said, if we got a hu- over a hundred, let's do one so that people can see what it's gonna look like, what it's all, when we get the whole town done, and it's time to go off and go do that. But I'm about to leave office, so I don't, it, it shouldn't be up to me, it needs to be up to the council. And you guys need to go off and decide now, like I said at the beginning, the only wrong answer tonight is to do nothing. So it's time to go off and pick one of these things, and let's get on with the getting on.
I, I just wanna say that I think because of the possibility of the infrastructure of the, you know, the pipes underground that are already caving in, that, um, it has to be, you know, we need curbs. Um, if, if that, if that happens to, if it does, if it does fail, then the city is gonna be responsible for so much, you know, so much more. So whenever we look at the frailty of the, you know, what's going on in the road, I think, you know, even though that's the entrance to our town, even though, you know, you may not even use those streets, some people do, I know I do. There's neighbors that I go visit down there. When I walk, I walk in those areas, and, you know, so when is the last time that those roads have been done? So I think they do need it, attention. Um, I think the one, which one is the one with the, with the big, uh, dip in the middle?
Definitely.
Uh, uh, but is it the Gonzalez to Crockett?
Yeah.
Between Bowie and Crockett, six hundred feet.
Okay, Bowie and Crockett, I would like to see that one get done. I would like to see that one get done.
All right, that, that would be great, and I think it's, it's probably the worst road that needs to be done. Well, let's look at the, let's talk about the, um, between, uh, Crockett and Main Street on Gonzalez. Uh, one thing that I like about that one is that it is a little bit more visible, and people can see that, that the city is actually doing something. Uh, it, it's, uh, it's not gonna cost as much, but it's a little bit more visible, the downtown businesses, we're gonna be able to, the people that go downtown to those businesses are gonna be able to see that, hey, look, we're doing something. Uh, I think that's kind of, uh, a kind of a good positive thing. Plus, we'll have a little bit money left over uh, for contingencies if we need them, and, you know, it, it would be a good starter for us, because we're having, I'm, I'm having conflict with trying to make a decision. Uh, so maybe when you take a little baby steps, try a little bit smaller road, and maybe a little bit more visible.
Um, but I shared on the screen, this is the, basically the survey of the right-of-way, so we see the number five twenty-two. That space that, that intersects with that five, that's the current right-of-way for the street, um, as it exists in the maps. The road actually curves off, I don't know if I can, let me see if I can get a paintbrush on this. The road actually kind of curves off like this. Or it probably is a little bit different than that, but so it, it bisects or impacts.
Right.
You know, six or seven properties that would have, that you'd have to go up and, and fix through surveying. So it would solve that issue um, that, that Lisa was talking about in terms of, you're gonna have to do it at some point, might as well do it, do it now. You also have, start considering where, what, what the previous discussions we've had, other council meetings regarding parking, um, with the build the road, I thought for parking in the future, but it's telephone poles in here that have to be redone, there's fencing. So that would get right away.
So that's not included in the, uh, in the eighty-seven thousand?
Thomas, that's a question for you.
Um, for the, uh, cost estimate on Broadway to Main, we have included, uh, these, the, uh, existing, or apparent right-of-way survey, the digital, digital terrain model we, we use to, uh, design for the topography, and it includes field notes and a parcel map for, uh, right-of-way acquisition, knowing that we've gotta go in there uh, and get a thin strip of right-of-way, uh, to, to be able to property build a road. All that's included.
Okay, I'm not understanding all that.
The answer to your question was included.
Excuse me?
What, what part don't you understand or explain it?
It was, yes, it was included.
It wasn't moving that, now, it, right now, you're, you're, we're having to curve in to kind of get into, get onto Gonzalez Street. Right? Is that what this curve in, you're saying it's having to go through property right now, or we're gonna make it more square so you can get in?
Square it up, square it up.
You're gonna square it up?
Yeah.
So you're just saying that there's a lot of right-of-way problems?
Yeah, part of the road. Yes, part of the road today exists on private properties within the right-of-way. And the, uh, design that we're proposing would, uh, put all of the roadway within the existing right-of-way.
Including.
Correct the problem.
Our.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Including moving that telephone pole. Our telephone, electric, or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Communication.
Yes, we, we may have to, we may have to, uh, move a few poles to accomplish that. Uh, based on the, uh, franchise agreement you have with, uh, your communications companies and, uh, uh, the electric company, uh, Bluebonnet, uh, they, they are required, given prior notice, prior proper notice, they are required to relocate those poles at their cost.
Yeah, my, my point, my point is why, we already got a road that's got a right-of-way, we don't have to move any telephone poles, we got a straight shot. And again, what's good for the county is good for us, and I think, I think we're doing a disservice to Martin Dale if we don't do Lockhart Street, because again, hardly anybody uses those two roads. You know, that's my point.
Just one route.
Downtown, which quite frankly is a whole lot more than it used to be. They make that left on Gonzalez Street.
Yeah, how many people live on Gonzalez Street? Lisa, how many people live on Gonzalez Street? A handful. How many people go to the post office every day? You know, that's my point, you know?
Yes.
I mean.
You have a good point, Mike.
I mean, let's do the right thing, folks, for the, for everybody in Martin Dale, not just for a select few that live on Gonzalez Street. It just ain't right. It ain't right, it ain't fair, it ain't right. And the county has done it before, and they've done it again, and we can get a good road for a, for a good price, man. I mean, it's, it's just insane. We don't have, I wish we had the money to do everything perfect, but we don't. It's just, I mean, it, it looks like a really viable option. I mean, I've been looking at this since I got elected. That's what I ran on was for the roads, and I've been looking at this for years. And I've looked at, I've talked to county people, I've looked at county roads, and it works! And it works, and I don't care whose opinion it is, I've talked to the guys that do the job, and it works, you know? I mean, uh, we're, you know, it's just, it's just not logical that we do two, a little road, a little Gonzalez Street, doesn't make any sense to do that little secondary road. And Mr. Turk, is that, is that, is a car gonna fall through and collapse that sewer line? Can you just put roadbase in there to secure it, to, to make sure it's safe? I mean, we're doing a disservice if we go for the Gonzalez Street. I, I just, my personal opinion to the citizens.
And I do think, yeah, I agree with you, there's a disservice being talked about, Mike, but I believe it's with, with repairing Lockhart Street instead of actually fixing it right.
Well, Devini.
What you've got is you've got a.
You know what, it's your opinion. You got Donald's opinion, it worked in the county, it's worked all over the county.
Right answer, in my opinion, just like your opinion is to do Lockhart Street, the right answer is that don't repair when you need to rebuild.
Well, I'm just saying, we're doing a disservice for the most of the people, because I never go down Gonzalez Street. Does anybody else? Hardly, hardly anybody goes down Gonzalez Street.
I think what Lisa was saying, Mike, that, Lisa, your, your audio is going in and out, so I, I, I'm.
Sorry.
Well, just, just think about this, folks, when we have a head-on on Lockhart, and we're trying to dodge potholes, my conscience is clear.
Is, well, Mike, I mean, like, can Mike already make a motion if he wants to do, if he?
He can.
So Mike, you can make a motion if you want to?
I, I'll tell you what, I'll make a motion that we do Lockhart Street with the, with the overlay.
Right, want a second?
I'll second.
Lockhart and overlay?
Mike, are you saying that also we might have to do some mill work or some edge work?
I would agree with you, Sam, if you wanna rephrase it, if we, if, if we take that extra money and ensure up the edges of the road or, or length, or make it wider, to use that whole twenty, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand would be great, or closer to it. I, I would agree, to make it kind of a more to fit, if, if it, if we, if it'll help our edge situation and the, and the width of the road. Don't know how we wanna phrase that.
Now, we haven't quoted that out specific the same way we have with Gonzalez, and so, um, just for the council's consideration on that. So those, those numbers are stand-in numbers, and so if you wanna move on this, you can go forward with the es- estimate, uh, but you may want to consider coming back with, with a full quote. Or, or more. Or, or more, or, or a better quote, or better estimate than we have now.
And we don't have to do so good for this. Sam, what say you? You want to go to Lockhart Street and say the others, yes or no?
Yes, on Lockhart.
Lisa? That is a, say again. Jan?
I'm here and so, and we're going to, deserve more than a mandate.
Jan?
Uh, go to the next person.
There's not one.
I think we're down to the next person.
Next person.
There was something in here about how long it was going to take as far as how many, where was that project management? Oh, here we are. The design process, process is going to take three months. Pre-construction utility to be determined, bid, just the bid process takes a couple of months. And then the construction, which you start getting on to, is going to be about four months. And I'm not sure for which part, Thomas, which, i- i- am I getting your name right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
I answered to a lot of things, but took.
Right, you're, this schedule, is it on page four of the handout? Was that just for Gonzales?
Yes.
I think that's just for Gonzales.
Correct, that's just for Gonzales Street.
Oh, okay, okay. All right.
Do we have to go?
I, I'm going to say, I'm going to say no. I, I'm, I'm.
Oh, you, you seconded, it's a you, you're a yes for Lockhart Street?
Mm-hmm.
It's three, three to two. Boy, it sort of showed out in a real consensus. But it passes.
And that's okay with me.
Can you please repeat the motion so I can make sure I got it right?
Lockhart Street is selected as the, as the road that we're going to spend this money on. Using the asphalt overlay process, we will have to, we then go get some real hard numbers on this one, but we're down to that.
So, so mayor, just to, just to ask, so then like, whenever it comes down to like doing the other streets, we have to wait at a later time to vote on that?
We don't have money for it. So at this point, if, if this, this will likely consume most of the remaining savings that we have in our long-term capital improvement fund. At, at that point, if, if the council has an appetite to, to do this, the next consideration would be to look at financing and the city taking on debt to can, to do more road repairs, either overlay or, or full repairs. And we can bring in a, a financial advisor to describe what, what those options kind of look like. And whether we would even qualify.
Uh-huh, so why, why were we, you know, if you're saying this is going to consume a majority of the debt, that, the way that.
Savings.
Yes, for the savings. So then the way that we did it, that was, you know, the lesser amount of all three.
Yeah. We should still have.
But you're saying that.
So, what, right now, we have two estimates. Hundred fifty thousand dollars, seventy-eight thousand dollars. Neither of them are exact estimates for the specific project, because we haven't done that work yet. We'll come back with what that estimate is for, for council, for your wearing.
Okay.
And then, um, we'll have, but my assumption is it's probably somewhere between a hundred fifty and seventy-eight. And we have a budget of about a hundred and thirty at this point. So that's going to be right about consuming all the long-term capital improvement fund savings.
Does this have to go out for a sealed bid?
Yeah.
The construction phase of this is. Now with, if we use the county to go do it, we may have an out with the interlocal agreements, seeing as how this is a repair maintenance thing instead of rebuild. So, so we may not have to do that for the construction phase if we use the county. If we go out to anybody else, we're going to have to go through that because it's over fifty grand. But Tom, Thomas will have to talk to those guys and work out the, the details of, of exactly the steps that they're going to go through and who's going to do what with the intersections and all of that stuff. That's, he's capable of, capable of doing that. We, we got us a decision, thank you.
Okay.
Lockhart Street's the one, we'll, we'll line up the next step. All right. Move on to section nine or agenda item nine A, discussion on suggested changes to the chapter fifty and fifty. These are just discussion only items, fifty and fifty-one of the city code of ordinances concerning wastewater payments and stuff. Jared's going to speak to that. Now, Sonya, you asked about talking about maybe stopping disconnects until we get through the repair.
Discuss the part.
And all of that is kind of wrapped up in this, so.
All right, so you received two read aheads, I'm only going to work through one of them. One's a PowerPoint presentation that, that summarizes the ordinance changes that are included in the latest draft and track changes. And so if you do that on your computer at home, you'll see the, the line by line what the changes are. But this, this will review the highlights of, of what's in there and then we can discuss the particulars. So where we were last week or last meeting, we discussed the current as-is process for delinquent accounts and some of the, the shortcomings and issues that we have there. The recommendations we discussed as, with council and what council provided feedback on were things to address for due dates in the ordinance, correct the inconsistencies with the late fees going with the ten percent, establish clear notification timelines regarding delinquent accounts, removing language concerning the use of a deposit to pay an account delinquency. Establish shut-off requests issued to Martindale Water Supply Corporation and, and Texas Disposal Systems at about sixty days after delinquency, procuring and subscribing to a billing management software that enables automatic bill payments and considering increased number of months for deferred payment plans in terms of how many, how long they would, that plan would last and how long they'd have to repay. And looking, consider a donation program for, for needy customers. And so we'll adjust these recommendations in the next slides and walk through that. So substantive changes. Here you have on the top of the chart is a table that compares the as-is with the latest draft of the ordinances as they were provided as read aheads for this meeting. So the place to start was, for me, was the billing date. And so right now, we don't have a, a billing date identified within our ordinance. And looking at the process and trying to simplify this, I, I chose to use the eighteenth of the month and we'll work through how that, why that's important later on. We, you can make that date whatever you want, but I think it's, it's one that will work well for the city. Currently, it's undefined. In terms of the due date, it's partially defined as or before the fifteenth of the month. That's only for the wastewater system ordinance. So looking at our current processes and continuing that, that process and as was expressed in the last council meeting, continue the current billing due date of the ninth of the month. And then when, when I was looking at how we do the delinquency notices and creating efficiencies with the city staff, reducing our postage costs that we send out to about four hundred some customers and, and create some efficiencies in time and, and things. Having the delinquency and disconnection notices follow the next subsequent billing date. So what that would do is everybody, if you're delinquent, you don't pay on the ninth, you'll, you'll receive a notice that you're delinquent at, at the same time as your next monthly bill. And then the disconnection date would be the ninth day following the month after the due date, which, which is another way of saying thirty days after the bill was originally due, if you're still delinquent, you're set up to a cut, uh, disconnection. And that's approximately fifty-two days after the billing date. Other thing that the ordinance didn't address is what happens when the city offices are closed. And so I, I look to other cities, San Marcos being one that, that had a, a process that I think made a lot of sense. And we attempted to clarify what those due dates and, and milestone dates are when the city regular business days are, when the city is closed on weekends and holidays. And the goal is to ensure we have a maximum amount of time between a billing date and a due date for our customers. That way, they're not the ones getting squeezed, but it, it's just what is on the city to, to manage those data. So if a billing date falls on a Friday or a weekend or a holiday, the bill date, the bill would be rendered on a previous business day prior to the eighteenth of the month. And so on the little chart you see with April twenty-twenty-one, what that will look like is the eighteenth falls on a Sunday. So the billing would actually go out earlier for our residents, it would go out on the fifteenth of, of April. And the due date, if the due date falls outside of the regular city business day, weekend or holiday on a due date, it would go forward, it would get, it would go to the next subsequent business day. And so again, on the April twenty-twenty-one calendar, the March bill that would, would have been sent out on March eighteenth would be due on the ninth, but the city offices are closed on that Friday. And so the bill would then become due on the twelfth. And so as we get into a rhythm where you have the billing dates and the, and the due dates and delinquency notices, if you were two months, if we started this process from scratch, two months from now, we start, you know, start the bill on the eighteenth of March, goes out due April ninth. Then on April eighteenth, when that next bill goes out, the delinquency notices for whoever did not pay by the, the ninth date would go out with the same bill. If they were still delinquent going into May, then after that, that due date in May, they would be subject to a cutoff. Lot of information, I hope I made, I spoke to it clearly. Tables and pictures work best. Any questions on, on this?
So the bill.
No. Go ahead. Okay, Jan, you're up. What you got?
The bills are due on the ninth. Basically, basically, okay.
Yeah.
And currently.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Jan, I interrupted, go ahead.
Currently, they're due on the fifteenth, correct?
Hmm, no.
Oh.
So.
It's undefined.
It's partially defined. In our, in our wastewater ordinance, it describes that the bill is due on or before the fifteenth. The solid waste services does not define the due date. And city practice has been for, at least while I've been here, that the bills are actually due on the ninth. And so for our customers who have been with the city for, for at least the last two years, you've been paying your bills on, the bill's been due on the ninth. The recommendation here is to continue that current practice and, and codify, memorialize it in the, this ordinance thing. The, the, the undefined portion is when the bill is issued by the city.
Okay.
I want to say that I like that because it gives people that are on a fixed income, usually whenever they get their checks, they have time to, you know, pay it at the, you know, at the beginning of the month. So I, I agree with, with how you've done it.
Yeah, it gives everybody at least three weeks to pay. And if, depending on, you know, people get paid at different times, if you get paid monthly, bi-weekly, it gives a lot of time to pay at the end of the month, beginning of the month, whatever works best for you. If you're on, you know, depending on what your, your situation is. Lisa, you were saying something?
And, and I just want to chime in that, yeah, in our last meeting, I made a pretty staunch statement about do not change the date. When I remember, don't make it any, or in the month. I'm very good with the way you've laid it out.
Me too.
Hey, any other questions or comments on, on this?
The, the only thing that I would like to just add, just to make a, make a statement, is that I know I've seen in other communities where if you're the age of sixty, then there are no late charges that would be applied to your account. I guess it's like, you know, a tax release or whatever, I know it's not the same thing. I know some communities do that, but I don't know if you've ever like seen any other things like that or.
I haven't, but we can discuss what other programs I have found.
Good.
In the next couple of slides. Sam or Mike?
It looks great to me.
All right. Um, other, other changes that you'll see in the draft ordinance is establishing common deposit language for the wastewater, solid waste, solid waste services regarding crediting accounts after twenty-four months of an on-time payment based on a customer-written request that's done via a standard form. So that language is already there in our solid waste ordinances. It was not codified in our wastewater, so that's just making them same, same. The others, the same change is establish a consistent and common late fee of ten percent. This is an area where there's, it seems pretty simple, but could cause some problems or, or might, might be an area of consideration. So our wastewater or wastewater services ordinance in, with describing the bill, the billing procedures, has a ten dollar late fee that's described. Later in that same ordinance, when regard, regarding delinquency, it references a ten percent late fee. And the solid waste uses a similar ten percent number. The city, at least since I've been here, has been using the ten dollar figure as a late fee, not the ten percent. So currently, most, most bills, if you have this, the basic standard service, your, your bill currently is about fifty-seven dollars, which means for some people, they were charged a ten dollar late fee, where if a ten percent late fee was applied, it would have only been five dollars and seventy-four cents, I think. So. Going full, I don't think, I don't think it would, it would be quite difficult to go back and audit those late fees and make anything, any change on this issue retroactive. And we would just proceed under the new guide, my, my recommendation is proceed under the new guidance of ten percent or the new ordinance of ten percent when, when it's adopted.
Or ten dollars.
Or ten dollars, if you want to make it ten dollars, we can make it ten dollars.
Council decision, I don't know how we got into the ten dollars in one place and ten percent in other places, but from a practical standpoint, still, you can tell us, we've been doing ten bucks for everything, right?
For.
A long.
At least. Four or five years now.
Uh, four or five years, you said.
Been a while.
So the, the issue for the council is to decide, is it going to be ten percent or is it going to be ten bucks? But, but whatever it is, it needs to be the same across the board.
Right. So that would take the billing clerk a little bit more time to figure out ten percent as opposed to just automatically adding ten dollars. It would take her more time to figure out ten percent, right? She'd have to add it up and then divide it by ten and all that.
That's a question for Dwayne.
It would take her more.
Did we figure out if this was an auto, automatic thing or just a?
I, I'm not sure, but yeah, most billing systems will do it either way.
Uh, I, I, I don't think.
It, it would be automated.
I would have made it, okay.
Lisa?
Um, this may not sound the best, but it is my personal opinion, and the reason it's ten dollars is because maybe somebody didn't really understand what a percent sign was, but it should be ten percent. And that way it is across the board and there's no figuring, it's a click. It's a click on QuickBooks or whatever accounting system we're using. There'll be no men, no mental math or, or pencil and paper math figuring for ten percent. The benefit of doing a ten percent is when and if the rates of the solid waste and/or our wastewater go up, there's no additional changes, be it in the ordinance or in the current system when it comes to a late fee. It stays the same, ten percent.
Good point. Well, the way you wrote this is, is it ten percent of the monthly allowance or ten percent of the overdue?
All right. So that's, that's.
If it's ten percent of overdue, it grows.
I believe, I believe it comp. I was, so that's another option. When we're talking about percentages, do we compound that fee? So if you're, if you're late, if you're, let's make the math simple. If, if you're late um, and the bill is fifty dollars and you get a ten percent late fee attached, now you're late, now your bill due, not due, it's fifty-five dollars. The next month comes and you're late again, you get, is it the, your bill was for fifty dollars plus the fifty-five dollars past due. Your total bill was a hundred and five dollars. Now if you get ten percent, now your late fee is ten dollars. And so your total amount due at that point is gonna be, you know, a hundred fifteen. I'm dropping this fifty cents, but.
You don't add ten percent to each month. It's per month. And that's just common.
It'll be five dollars every time if you have a fifty dollar bill.
Whatever you want to decide.
You want, you can be whatever you want to decide, but it, the danger is if, if you have uh, somebody go, go very far in the compounded interest scenario, it can grow quite large, especially if you're a commercial customer with significant um, you know, services being at your property.
You just don't do that. It's not, it's not good business practice. It needs to be ten percent of that monthly bill. And then yes, all those five dollars get added up.
Right.
You don't add the five dollars to the monthly bill and then call it a different ten percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm checking. Yeah, so right now it does not, it does not compound. Uh, so it, it is exactly as you're stating, Lisa. It's, you get ten percent for this month and once that fee applies, that sticks. And then if you wait another month, a separate, you know, one month's worth of late fee gets applied.
Isn't there a, an, an appeal basis or something that if you're having trouble paying your bill, you can fill out some form? You know, maybe we can stop the interest payments until they can get the bill paid.
Uh, we'll get to that in a second.
Okay.
Um.
I think we're all good with ten percent.
Yeah.
Yes.
The other thing we did was remove language regarding charging deposits for active delinquent accounts. Basically, under the current ordinance, if, if someone was late on their bill, the first step that the city administrator had to do was credit whatever deposit was held by that customer or for that customer, pay the past due amount against their deposit. So their deposit amount is there then decreased. So I want to go back to a couple of slides. If, i- if you recall, this is one of those scenarios where if you run out of your deposit and then you're late, you can end up with a total, you know, reconnect fee of four hundred and twenty-five dollars because two hundred and thirty of it was just repaying your deposit. And we discussed, we don't want to be in the business of trying to manage and recoup deposit amounts. And so the changes that were made in the update were that deposits are only going to be used in the case of that someone terminates their service because, you know, whether they're moving away or they don't want service anymore. And that's an action that they took themselves. Or if they qualify to have that deposit credit to their account after twenty-four months of, of payment and they submitted the, the form to have that done. Other than that, that deposit stays. And really what it's there for is for somebody not paying their last month bill or last couple of month bill and skipping town. And then, then that's the point when we would go and credit that deposit only in that case. But we would, we wouldn't do it in a, you know, in an active role for every delinquent account if their one-day delinquents start charging against their deposit. Any, any questions on, on that? Um, here's some of the other outstanding issues that, that were not addressed uh, yet. So these are recommendations. They may not, some of these do not pertain to a specific ordinance change, but they came out of the previous discussion. Um, the first one was for pure subscribing to a billing management software to enable automatic bill payments. Um, so we're, we're looking into these capabilities within the current upgraded QuickBooks accounting system. There's, there is a method that we would, we could with limited cost, establish a way to do automatic bill payments. However, it would not provide the ability for somebody to go in and, and view their account on, you know, login and, you know, view the status of their account. So what that would look like in practice, we'd either use a, with a small fee, a, a company like Bill.com or others that would manage that signup process to have that done. Or the city would develop a form and someone could submit on that form a voided check. And that voided check is now, it goes into the system and we, we update on QuickBooks and QuickBooks processes it um, according to that and, you know, automatic payment enrollment form that, that we come up with. So I think that's a, that's a win. I think that's something we can do soon. Um, we have, I still want to look into it a little bit further, make sure we have all our I's dotted, T's crossed, and that's something that we can move out on. Uh, it's not the full, you know, billing suite that we're hoping for, but it's, I think it would help residents and help people pay their bills on time. I know I use automatic bill pay for staying there, everything I do and providing that service to, to our residents, I think is, is important. Any comments, questions on, on that?
Yeah, let me, let me just make sure that that it's, that I'm, that I'm clear. I think I am, but maybe for others as well. Other citizens times of bill pay, you can do an automatic bill pay through your bank. If in fact where the payment is going is a large company like another bank or a large electric company or something, they may be connected. They can electronically send that money from your bank. Or if they're not, like Martindale is not. So in my personal situation, I have automatic bill pay with my bank. I literally cut a hard copy check and put it in the mail. And it had to be delivered, received error in there. And then the mail didn't come. I get charged the late fee because the mail didn't come when I really wrote the text seven days ago or, you know, ten days ago. So I like what you are describing, that you would be, we would then be able to do an automatic bill pay directly with the city and there would be no lag time. Is that correct?
That's correct. Basically, if, if we're using a, the avoided check type form, a automated clearinghouse
Yeah.
request would be sent to your bank from QuickBooks to, to get those funds. Or um, if, if you're some, we're still looking into how it would apply to credit card payments and, or debit card payments. Um, but the voided check one is, that's, that's basically how it works.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's, I think that's, it's high pass time. So thank you.
So the voiding check is for the routing number?
Basically, it's, 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 it's easy for us to capture routing number and account number and then we would update it in the QuickBooks and.
Well, what, what happens if you do? What happens if they bounce the?
Do make those, make those.
If, if you get, if you get a bounce, we, that's something we probably want to address in the ordinance. If it's a, a fee, unlikely would be a, a recoup or whatever, you know, law card banker, whomever would charge the city for, for that bounce. All right. So the other outstanding issue is consider increasing the number of months for the deferred payment plan. So currently the payment plan is, is for six months. So if someone is delinquent, they, they, or I guess they don't necessarily have to be delinquent, but if someone needs a, a, a payment plan, it's limited to six months. And so for, for some people, if they have a very large delinquency, six months may not be a, a enough ti- uh, it's for very large delinquencies, six months is can be pretty short because they have to pay their current bill plus whatever they're, they're owed. Um, I think the update on this is with the revised billing date and due dates and notification timelines, we should prevent significant accrual of delinquencies. And so um, I don't know if it's needed. If we want to do that now, like right now, um, it would require a uh, an, an action by a city council, you know, such as an ordinance change. And that would be, if that was done separate from this ordinance change process we're working through right now in this discussion, if there's a um, a desire to, to change it to twelve months, that would still require an ordinance change or some other.
The way it works is up to six months, right?
Correct.
And it also has that, that you only do this once a year.
Correct.
So if you change it to up to twelve months, then you have the leeway of doing it six, seven, eight, nine, ten, whatever, five, four, whatever, anything less than twelve. And it doesn't extend past the twelve-month limit that you already got set in a different program.
Yeah.
B, that gives, gives more flexibility to the, to the city staff and, and keeps you out of making the decision. I, I, I think you'll change it to twelve.
Okay. Any other? Any thoughts on that from council?
Well, that would still, that would still be in a, a, an ordinance change, correct?
Correct. So if, if we incorporate that into our current ordinance rewriting process we're doing right now, um, probably, that probably won't be in place until, I don't know, maybe March, but probably April, whenever the next time this is on the agenda. Probably April. Um, if there was a desire to change this in the, in the intervening period, there would, we would require some sort of council action on it. And it wouldn't be on this agenda if this is discussion only. It'd have to be our, our mid-March agenda item.
I'm okay.
You don't have anybody in line. That's.
No.
Okay.
We likely will. So um, we have about little, something over about thirty, thirty delinquent accounts are more than thirty days, less than sixty, about eighteen that are more than sixty. But another eighteen or so over ninety. Um, that, that's based on, I'd, I'd have to look at the figures. So there, when, when we start this process and we're and we fix our delinquency notice issues, I, and start going to disconnects, I could foresee getting a large number of requests for, for these payment plans. Any other discussion on this?
So you're saying they would have twelve months to pay it off instead of six?
Has an option to it. Yeah, option to it. Up to twelve months, yeah.
It seems like they, they would get farther and farther behind though, because you're adding on each monthly bill.
No, you're not.
Then you have the stuff you hadn't paid in the past. I mean, it would just, and the ten percent late fee, wouldn't it just get bigger and, well?
It, it would only, it would, you want to get bigger the way that it's getting better, bigger right now. Our, our delinquency process is broke. If, if someone was on a payment plan and they failed to pay, they're subject to a disconnect. And so how we.
Look at it this way, if you're, if, if you've got a hundred and twenty dollars that you're, you're high on. And you can only spread it over six months. You gotta pay everything that you're supposed to pay during that six months. And you gotta pay twenty bucks a month more for that six-month period. If you spread it to a hundred, to twelve months, then it's ten bucks more. It's actually, you get out of trouble for a smaller amount of number money, but it takes you longer to go do it.
I see.
It, it, and by moving it to twelve months, that's the way we got it written. It doesn't say you have to do twelve months. It gives the flexibility to the employee or to the uh, customer to work it out with Jared or the city administrator and figure out what's best for them. The reason I, you stopped it at twelve was, as we say, you can only do this once a year. So theoretically, somebody says, I, I need to get on a payment plan. I gotta go to full length. I'm in trouble. I gotta do something. They could go twelve months. If, if they didn't try to do it in six and failed, then they're out of luck.
Yeah.
We can't do it yet.
Okay. No, that, that explains it better to me. Thank you.
Any other discussion, questions on that? All right. Um, the donation program for needy customers. So this gets a little bit to what you were talking about, uh, Tesla, the low list about waiving late fees and stuff. Um, the, the discussion we had was, is it possible for us to include a donation program on the billing so people could donate a dollar to, to customers who, who may need assistance and then um, use those funds to help cover those who have very limited means? And so looked at what other cities do. Most refer customers in that state to federal and state benefits. However, federal and state benefits only cover essentially utility, energy utility. So your electric, maybe, maybe some, some gas utility, um, basically so you can heat your home and, and have air conditioning. It does, they, the federal state programs don't, don't cover, um, they might cover water at a state level or some other places, uh, but definitely does not cover solid waste or wastewater.
Gotcha.
Um, at, at a federal or state level.
And I know Lisa had said about the adding to the bill or at, making a donation towards the bill, but I understand what you're saying.
So the other option that, that city, the, the second way that cities address needy utility customers um, is referring them to nonprofit programs, uh, most frequently, at least in the ex-local area, central Texas to United Way. And United Way then working with those customers for any assistance that the United Way can, can, can provide. And the city is, is separate and apart from that process completely.
Well, see, I would, I would like, you know, just to see, I know some cities are separate from that process, but they do provide links to these organizations, you know, like it is on their city page and they do say, if you need help or assistance, here is where you can get it. So if we could just add, you know, to our city page, like community, um, you know, like help with those numbers, then I think that would just offer more empowerment to our citizens. I know we've had Mel. We have, you know, that's right here and uh, that does help some of our community members. So you know, I know that it's happening, but just some people just don't know how to get in touch with those nonprofits.
Yeah, we do have a nonprofit operating in the city that, that is helping some residents. Um, I'm not sure what the size of that program, we want to work with them, make sure we are, we're okay with, with referring customers to, to their organizations and for that. But I think that's, that's a good point.
And I can help. What I'll do is I'll help get a list. I'll compile everything for the area, make sure it's correct, and I'll help you out in that manner.
That'd be excellent.
I'll help you with that.
That'd be excellent. The third way, and, and it's less common, uh, much less common, is that cities partner with non-governmental organizations for administering city and donation-funded direct assistance programs. Um, the closest one, closest city that does this is New Braunfels Utilities does this. Um, Deton does one, I think it was Tyler, Tyler Taylor, one of those. Um, do this. And the way that works, a- as I understand, just looking at the website and um, we're trying to contact them and, and get more information. But essentially they set up a contract with the local food bank, the New Braunfels Food Bank. And the food bank. And the food bank already manages a lot of the SNAP with and other assistance programs, means, you know, assistance programs. And the food bank receives the, the city funds and donation funds and administers a, um, direct assistance program for the utility customers in, in New Braunfels if, if they qualify. And so, if we, um, want to look at what that contract looks like and see if that would be a, you know, report that back, see if it'd be of interest, but essentially what that would say is if you're a hundred or a hundred fifty percent of, or whatever we want it to be, of the federal poverty line, poverty, poverty guidance, uh, based on your household size, you would qualify for X benefit. Um, and I'm not sure what those benefits are for New Braunfels, but you could take the assumption if it's a hundred fifty percent of, um, poverty line, if you're below that threshold, maybe your bill's paid for, maybe it's fifty percent paid for. And the way that New Braunfels funds that is, they have a very, very large, um, basically a PFIA or, or holding of cash, and they take the interest earned on, on that cash and apply in their utility fund and apply it to this assistance program. And it, you know, for their customer size, there's a couple, you know, customer size that qualifies for this program, about a few thousand. It, it costs them a little over two hundred thousand dollars from what I can tell. So a city our size is not going to be two hundred thousand dollars, obviously, but it's probably going to be on the order of five to ten, depending on what, what that size would be, um, and who would qualify. And we've, we've, we went down that path, we do, do a lot more research to understand where, what, what our customer base is, what the cost would be, who would, um, administer that, that program. What I think of, what no city in Texas does is administer it themselves. Um, especially for, uh, the city of Martindale, I think that would be the wrong answer, is for us to manage those funds um, and manage that program and deciding, um, who's qualified, who's not. It's best left to the professionals who do that work, um, within our community, like the, you know, the Caldwell County Food Bank or, or some other organization that does, um, assistance for, for people who may qualify for those benefit programs. Any questions on, on this piece? Alright. Uh, lastly, th- this is a discussion about, um, temporary cessation of late fees and disconnects, ba- basically cancelling all continuing late fees or disconnections. So, uh, the, the comment was made by a council, by a council member, you know, could, could the city, um, not issue late fees and stop all disconnections? And so, looking at the ordinance, um, this would be a significant policy decision that would have to be made by city council. It's not something that, that I can do. Um, I cannot cancel all late fees without action of the city council. Um, because in the ordinance, it says, uh, I'm unable to provide free services, and that would be similar to a free service as, as is identified in, in the ordinance, in my reading of it. Um, I have limited discretion regarding the disconnections under the as-is ordinance. And that discre- um, discretion really applies to how as soon as possible is interpreted. Um, and really, I, I don't really have that much of a choice whether to disconnect somebody or not. It doesn't matter when the determination of whether it's possible for us to, to proceed with that, not proceeding. Um, so the recommendation is, uh, if, that we continue to charge late fees and process disconnection notices after the adoption of an updated ordinance, if the city council wants to cease issuing late fees and disconnection notices, that would have to be an action made by city council at, at our next meeting.
Like a resolution or something.
It's either resolution or-
What this comes to mind is, is the COVID thing, right? It started out, they put, um, what do you call it when you kick somebody out of the house? Uh, eviction, you know, the gu- the, the government, feds and the, and state both in their emergency declarations did some legal stuff to go say, we're going to postpone evictions uh, for a certain amount of time due to bond payment because of COVID. And then that ran out, people started that process again, uh, for bond payment, et cetera. And then this latest round of what's going through Congress, right now we've got another section in there that says, stop all that stuff. Trump did something and said, stop the evictions, you can't do that. We don't have anything like that in the, in our ordinance, right? And we didn't.
We do it, and we did not fall under the, the Public Utility Commission when they put out their guidance, um, which expired in July, I think, sometime over this, sorry.
So, uh, we've kind of just been using the, the as soon as possible rule to say, we, we haven't been turning people's water off or whatever. But it'd be nice if, while, while we're going through this ordinance, to put some language in there. And I don't know what the words need to say, Kent could help us on that maybe or something, but, but put something in there that either, either gives the city administrator leeway to make a decision based off of emergency declarations or something, or states specifically that the city council needs to, you know, by resolution, may postpone these or something, you know, but, but get it in writing so that the next time that this kind of stuff comes up, there's a, we know the steps that we have to go through.
Do you mind if I, Lisa?
What's that?
Yes, yeah, Lisa, do you mind? I see you raised your hand. Rob, I think, I think that's exactly right. It's, it's the kind of administrative thing that the, Jared or whoever the, the manager is in five years oughtn't be coming to the council for, for approval on stuff like this. There ought to be authority in place to proceed and take action based on some established policy. Otherwise, it creates an administrative nightmare. That's how it should be done.
And what I was going to say, Mayor, is that anything that comes down from the governor, like in regards to the COVID situation, that's going to supersede anything that we have in our policy and our records. Um, I am aware that the eviction, uh, no eviction is effective through March fifteenth.
Yeah, but Lisa, the problem here is that, just like Jared pointed out, is that evictions, is that the same, it's not paying your water bill, is that the same, it's not paying your solid waste bill? There's overlaps and there's things, but, but there's lots of, there, there could be a lot of, uh, opinions associated with that. And what you don't want to do in those kind of situations, I don't think what we want to do in those kind of situations is argue about them in the heat of the battle, right? I mean, w- w- when we have a, a COVID outbreak, or we got a winter weather outbreak, or whatever, it's not time to sit here and, and debate that kind of stuff. There needs to be some instructions on how, how we can go address that and do it quickly if necessary. So that's why I'm saying it, it needs to be some, something in the ordinance, I think, that, that, that talks about, it seems like I saw one somewhere, but.
And then, uh, if I could chime in, I wanted this as an action item. Um, I wanted it as an action item, you know, on tonight's agenda. The reason being is because of our, the weather that we had. There is people right now that were using their rent money, their living money, their month-to-month money that they live on, that they had to weatherize their house, buy plastic, make repairs on their pipes, do what they need to do. And you know what they have now? They have, they don't have money. They, this isn't like, just like we need policy in place for whoever is our city administrator, if they do say, let's stop, uh, disconnects and let's stop late charges for a month. I don't see that, you know, that there should be a problem with that. A month, two months, however long, you know, some period of time where they can say, it's, until it's, until further notice, until we see that, you know, things are cha- things are changing. But this whole area was, you know, it's declared a disaster area.
So are we gonna? Yeah, I certainly agree with what you are saying. My question, what you are suggesting, which I agree with, would that be, um, do the administrators describe?
We don't, we don't, we're not proposing any language tonight. The, what the discussion was is, is should we put it in the ordinance or not? Um, we're, we're trying to get a feeling, obviously Sonia says, yeah, get it in the ordinance so, so we don't have to waste time doing this. Uh, I don't hear anybody saying, hey, don't, don't put it in the ordinance changes. Uh, Kent seemed to seem to think that, that, that getting it documented was the right answer. So I think we get, we can give Jared clear direction on that one, is go ahead and try to come up with some words to put, put in his ordinance, Jim.
I think the other discussion was, as we're going through this ordinance change process, should there be some action during the current disaster period? Um, and that's not an action item on tonight. Just, but it's, it's, it could be something that we, we consider. And that's why I was, this, this is really responding, saying, there's nothing I can do without city council action on it. Um, and so if city council wants to take action on it, then, then they can, and.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll address that, about putting discussion versus discussion slash action. I've taken the stance that, that we're not going to go put, you know, hey, we want to do something about, about A, but we don't know what it is yet as a, as an action item or, or something we can take action item, without defining what that something is. And I've done that to everybody, Sonia, and I've done it this time to you too. I'm not, I, we're not going to come in here, discuss it in the heat of battle, go, go, go decide something that gets laid in grant. We need to have, you know, deliberate thought over it and, and come up with that.
I know, I-
We're, we're trying to. Now, as far as the people are out there, I don't believe we shut anybody's water off since COVID started.
We haven't.
We've been-
The, the most we've done is we've, it's solid waste. We've done some solid waste, service discontinuation.
Plenty of notice to the, to the customers in there. Uh, the only one who really done it on business.
Yeah.
Now, from, from that standpoint, we're just using a little common sense from now. And it'd be best if we could get it in the ordinance so we know that, you know, that our people can come behind us.
If we can, and I wouldn't have, you know, said, like, put it in a, a- ask for it to be as an action item without doing research first around all, a whole bunch of other communities and other, you know, municipalities that did have something in place, and maybe they have something in their ordinances, you know, for their citizens, um, you know, to be able to, to take that action, so. But it's good knowing nobody's water has been shut off.
Okay, on the outstanding issues on this slide, those four bullets, I think I heard, what I heard was is out of the discussion that you're still studying and everybody understands that on bullet number one. Bullet number two, I think I heard, go ahead and try to, to word the changes for-
A month.
Twelve months. And go ahead and stick that one in there. Bullet number three is considered donation program, that's still studying and thinking about that one, there's no action on that one. And then the temporary cessation of late fees, disconnects, we need to see if we can get, get word from somebody else or from Kent or somebody to slip in there on this goal.
And, and do we want to limit it to disaster declarations and, and the like? Or, you know, i- i- is it a, a mayoral declaration, is it a, a administrator's decision? Um, I'll, I'll come up with, I'll, I'll look at something, but there's preferences, I'll take those preferences now, so I know what to, to go with.
The mayor can't make a declaration unless the state makes a declaration.
That's not true. I think I could declare a disaster anytime we had a disaster. It's only good for seven days, but it's, but I, I believe the mayor, mayor has that, to make a declaration. Now, how much you can change with ordinances in that, I'll have to defer to Kent on that one. But, but making a declaration that we've had a disaster can happen anytime. That we don't necessarily have to have a declaration at the city level if we're covered by either the state or the county or, or actually the feds.
I envision Rob excessively exercising his power in the last couple of months in office.
It has to be. Okay, now, that takes care of nine A, we're on to nine B. And nine B is, is that we did over the, the, the week of the fifteenth, sixteenth, on the seventeenth, twelve and seventeen, TDS, they missed their pickups on the fifteenth, they missed their pickups on the sixteenth. They, it turns out with due to road conditions, they missed their pickup on the seventeenth. And on the Thursday, the eighteenth, they said, hey, we missed a whole week, we're not coming back. So, uh, they voluntarily told us that what they'll do for the next week, which was this past week, uh, we're going to get back, they said they're going to get back on the regular schedule. They were going to do what they refer to as a cleanup, which allowed us to go back. And if people had trash in excess of their container, if they could put up two bags and decided they would pick those up. Uh, they're also going to do that tomorrow with recycle, tomorrow the first recycle since then. If there's a part, pasteboard box or some container on the side of the recycle, they'll pick those up too. Uh, and they said, there, see, we took care of you. We called them up when we first got back here and said, hey, you missed one day out of four in February, or one week out of four in February, we, we'd like a twenty-five percent reduction in February's cost. That sent them into a tailspin for a few days, and they came back and we had, had and said, uh, the boys at the top say no. We, they were not going to do that. With the, the fact that they've increased the pickups on those other two days, they say it's just going to have to do us up. However, that doesn't mean that we can't go give our customers a refund, uh, or credit, dollar refund, uh, credit. And the amount that I, we, we came up with, or I came up with, was a quarter of, of the TDS charges. We didn't miss a monthly billing, which is what our, our add-on is all about. Uh, but the, what we did is we missed one week's worth of service out of that. And so, one, one quarter of what the residential rate for, um, a customer for February is six dollars and eighty cents. So the question before the council, this is not an action, this is a question to get your feels, is, is that do we want to go in there and, um, give our folks this credit? This adds up to about thirty, three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the year for four hundred and eighty customers, or four eighty-two, or whatever the number was. Uh, so with that discussion, anybody, anybody besides me think this is a good idea?
Well, quick question first, because my internet kind of jumped. What did TDS say when you asked them for a twenty-five percent cut for the month? I missed it.
They said no.
Just like no.
What's that?
Yes.
Just straight away, no.
From the higher ups.
No, what, what, we, we, we went up through Ray and Stephanie and they took it to the, their board and their owners. And, uh, they, they spun on it for about five days, and then they told Ray, he's got to come back and tell us know what you did. And the reason, they, they-
So you were asking what we think-
You got to understand that, that although they didn't drive their trucks that day, they still picked up all the trash. So when they came back last week and started picking up trash, all the trash cans were fuller than they normally are for our route. They timed their, their, their routes and their truck numbers all about normal operations. So when they missed one, they were running trucks, only making it halfway through their routes before the truck was full. They had to make an extra trip back to the dump and all that. So their cost really didn't go down much according to them, alright? And they, they, they saved the labor of the week that they didn't do it, I suppose, but the, 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 the number of trips they made is basically the same number of trips back and forth to the dump, they just did it in one week instead of two. And they said to make up for the difference, they decide, they, they would go around and pick up these extra two bags to give us, you know, help in, in cleaning up any, the overflows or whatever. That does take them some more time. So it, you know, some of their rationale is kind of reasonable, but the bottom line is, they're not going to give us this twenty-five percent discount.
Okay. So what about?
What did you ask?
Yeah, Jan, what you got?
I, I think I messed up Lisa's-
Yeah, I think I messed up Lisa's. Now, I wanted to know what she thought about the city doing something.
Well, that was that was my question that I just wanted to confirm. So what you are asking is that what we think about city giving all residents across the board a cut, a twenty-five percent cut for that day? And I'm just clarifying, that's what you're asking us.
That's kind of what I'm asking you. I would, I would not refer to it as a twenty-five percent cut. I would refer to it as a six dollar and eighty cent credit.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what it is. If they take their bill and divide it between, divide by a quarter, it's gonna come out to more than that because of the eight dollars we stick on there for for billing services, all our our handling of this activity.
That's the standard account.
That's for, yes, standard. So, uh, so, yeah, that, you know?
Well, I mean.
We didn't do what we said we were gonna do.
I mean, I like the idea of saying you could put two additional bags out beside your can, but I've seen it and I still see the same trash cans on Main Street that if the lids are not closed, they do not pick those cans up. There's been two cans down on Main Street that have been sitting there for weeks and weeks and weeks. So does that mean they're gonna pick up cans that might have the extra bags in the garbage can, but the lid isn't closed? Because I would like some clarification on that, because I've been looking at the same trash cans on Main Street that have been there for weeks that have not been picked up because they're overflowing.
Have they got, no, are they got brown tops on them? Are they recycled cans?
Uh, brown, yes. I mean, it's right on.
Because they have been not picked up recently.
No, we're not recycling. It's garbage cans that are overflowing.
They got brown top.
Yeah, brown, brown cans. So, I mean, and I've seen it, that if if the lids are not closed, they they don't pick it up. So are they saying now that whether it be in can or in the solid?
No, no, they said that it's one week, last week, they were gonna pick up bags of trash beside containers that have black tops.
Okay.
They they didn't pick up any containers that have brown tops, okay, because that's a recycle can. This week, they're gonna pick up the recycle. So you've seen, a lot of people left the recycle out there. They didn't go look on the webpage. They didn't get the word yet that 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 things were back to normal. So they're still out there and they're overflowing. They are overflowing. And it doesn't look like recycle. It looks like trash, which is another problem. But they're only gonna do that last week for red, for black top cans, and this week for brown top cans. And then they're gonna go back to the normal operation of just picking up the the container. That's all they're gonna do.
Okay.
Now, back at the ranch, let's see here. Lisa, you said yea or nay on the six eighty. You like the idea? Don't like the idea?
You and I have actually had this conversation before.
What? Did you hear me?
Lisa.
So it's something about a conversation before.
Are you back now? Say something.
Lisa.
She's freezing. Okay, Sonya, what do you want to do? What do you think?
I think, I think, yeah, I think yes. The six eighty for the for the customers.
Okay, Mike, what do you think about any of this?
It looks great to me, Mr. Devaney. Give give it, give the citizens a a break. I agree with it.
After all, the city did go into contract with them, which I did not vote for them, but I think it's up to the city to to make good.
Okay, Sam, what about you?
Okay, yes.
Credit it off.
Give them the discount, yes. The credit.
Jan, did I ever, did I ever get a good or no, yea or nay from you?
I I'm all forward. I just have a question about whether or not to have, um, I mean, what the accounting, I assume it's just a QuickBooks quick thing that's gonna happen?
Yeah, yeah, I I I know we can post the credit right across the board. Dwayne, the odd yes, no? He's, he's. He's saying, yes, it's a QuickBooks thing.
Okay, yes. Go, Lisa. If you can.
Well, this is a unbudgeted expense, though. The the city's still paying that that funding. So.
Yeah.
It's gonna come out of somebody. It's either coming out of our our repair budget or or some other budget line item within the utility fund.
So what what it would do is it wouldn't be an expense. It would be a reduction in revenue. If y'all will go back to Dwayne's report, the profit and loss budget versus actual report, under solid waste, it's account fifty-twenty, you will see that we are doesn't show, we're at thirty-three point two percent of the of the revenue for the year through January.
Right on the button.
Right on the button.
All right, I'm hoping that we don't get an echo, but I but I got you on speakerphone, Lisa.
All right, I'm putting myself on mute. Um, what I wanted to say is that I do agree with giving that credit. But I would like for there to be a news flash added to our website to residents, letting them know that we're doing it.
Okay.
Just like I've gotten a, just like I've gotten a news flash from BlueVonant that my rates are gonna be X, Y, Z, just like I've got my news flash from the water company. Now, they're gonna handle my next bill.
We'll do that once we, once we we know exactly how we're gonna do it. There won't be a problem.
Can I just stay up here because my internet keeps going crazy?
It does.
I'm just gonna, I'm leaving the meeting.
The, uh, so there there, we're right, we're right on the line. We typically go right on the line. Last year, I think we came in a little ugh, I don't know, it was you, so close you couldn't tell the difference. My feeling is, is that by the end of the year, um, we're probably gonna go ahead and have have most of that covered, if not all of it, so with new bid, new new customers coming on. So I'm not worried about it affecting, surely not at the bottom line. It may affect that fifty-twenty line a little bit, but not much. So I don't think that the amount of money is that significant. We tried to do this for a whole month or so. It'd get get to be significant. But one week, it's not gonna be.
We start losing commercial accounts, though. It could, it could be significant.
Why are we gonna lose commercial accounts?
Commercial establishes meant not paying enough.
Oh.
It's not a good sign of their health of the organization.
Did you hear? Texas is back to normal.
Those commercial businesses need to be extended the opportunity to fill out a, a, um,
Okay.
Form for payment plan.
Yeah, we we've been reaching out, then.
Okay.
If there's a big problem, let us know.
This was a discussion before I turned Dwayne loose to figure out the mechanic for how to make this happen and how hard it is. We will put on the next agenda that there, you know, a a motion for the for the council to pass once we have all that. But that was what we wanted out of that particular agenda item, is to get the temperature of the council. So that brings us to future items on the agenda. Most of the stuff's there that we've had there. One of the things that we're gonna have to talk about, uh, doesn't have to be tonight, that I was just telling you, we're gonna need to talk about it, is that, uh, the election begins on the nineteenth of April. That's a Monday. The early voting does, and it is in this this room. Uh, it will have, of course, have equipment up, and we'll have to have the thing set up for the for the voting activity. So we will not be able to have this meeting in this room on the twentieth, four and twenty. That's the second meeting of April. Uh, we'll need to decide next meeting is whether we want to move that to a different location, which means we will not have audio, vis- audiovisual equipment available. Or we can do it full Zoom, which doesn't seem to work too well. Or we can cancel the thing and say that that's a close to the election list. Wait till the next go-round. Y'all get ready to.
You can add it. Add it to the agenda.
What does she say?
Oh, yeah, there might, there might be some some regulations regarding, if we if we do it at a certain location, candidates, um, proximity to that that official meeting.
Let's discuss it at the next meeting.
There you go. So that's that's coming. Now, what else we got on here that, uh, uh, we decided we're gonna go have the ordinance change changes to fifty and fifty-one that we talked about. And uh, at some point in time, we gotta have a review of cost of lock art.
Mayor, could I request something to be placed on the agenda?
Sure.
I wanted to, uh, to plan as soon as possible a citywide cleanup, and I'll head it. I'll be in charge of it.
Sorry, you put yourself.
I would like to to have that as soon as, you know, as soon as possible. So if we could, like, if I could send you some dates, or we could do a date, and then maybe it could be put on the agenda for action?
Yeah, we'll we'll put it on there for act, uh, anybody got a, nobody's got a problem with doing that. It's it's time.
Lisa, the 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 request was to put it on the agenda, um, the next citywide cleanup, and and council member, bill, all of us is gonna take the lead on that.
Great, fantastic.
Uh, I I wanted to maybe do discussion and a a action on, uh, Guardiola Park improvements. Discussion and possible action.
If you will go give us a written description of what you're proposing
Yes.
before the meeting.
Yes, I will.
Uh, we we can get that in there. We usually send those out on Thursday. We like to have them on Wednesday in case there's questions or whatever, but.
Oh, I'll have a meeting with the committee, and we'll get get that that together before the next city council meeting.
That might be difficult with the hosting announcements, but you can do it.
Okay.
Seventy-two hours, seventy-two hours. That's.
Anybody got anything else?
I don't have a lot of time to do it.
Wayne's in it.
Email.
Yeah.
The next meeting would be, uh, April, nope, three sixteen.
March.
Three sixteen.
Sixteen.
Isn't that a planning and zoning meeting?
Yeah, it's a regular schedule.
It's it's set aside for planning and zoning business if it's fine.
Okay.
And we are gonna have a meeting on that. We got some.
You know what? Um, but that's the third, the Tuesday, right?
Yeah.
And I have my CAD meetings that day. So.
All right, so the next meeting is what time, when?
Next meeting is scheduled right now for three sixteen, unless y'all want to change it, but.
No, we leave it there.
Uh, now, i- isn't there a public meeting next week?
Yeah, we got, we gotta do it on the sixteenth, because there's two public hearings or two two actions for a public hearing for these,
Oh, okay.
City corridor certificate of appropriations.
Right, so we got the public meetings and and a city council?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. On the sixteenth.
And we don't have to put the the cleanup there.
I'll be here. I'll be here.
Anybody else got anyone that they want to throw in there?
We decide what we want to do. But back into February, second meeting, discussed. Trying to schedule the plant, uh, zoning ordinance review.
Yeah.
We're gonna do a workshop.
Workshop, right. So either on a Saturday or 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 a Monday.
You you're the presenter on that, so let's, I'll throw one out there.
I'm available at, yeah, at council availability. My recommendation would be to do it on a Saturday. That way we can get it all done. Um, and if we need to take a lunch break, we take a lunch break.
Only if the city's gonna buy us lunch.
I think I could do that.
I say that lightly. I say that lightly.
Okay.
So pick a Saturday.
I don't have my calendar in front of me.
You got the sixth, the thirteenth, the twentieth, twenty-seventh?
How about the sixth?
Did you read it on this this Saturday? All the Rita heads are, I haven't changed anything since the last meeting, because I had, I didn't want to have multiple versions out for review. Give everybody a chance to review the version that's currently set, and then Patrick comments on that.
No, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Seventy-two hours, seventy. You figured it out?
You can post it tonight, four in the morning.
Twenty-four, forty-eight, well, that means we have to put it out in the morning.
Wednesday, tomorrow.
You bet, yeah, would that be, what time of day we're gonna do this?
Probably about ten o'clock?
Have to have it out before ten?
I'm gonna do it then. You have to send me what you want before.
I don't have my calendar in front of me, so I don't know if I can make it. Probably not.
Be better for the thirteenth. Give us time to do all of that. I mean, y'all are pushing it. Y'all, I mean, we're gonna squeeze it out.
Thirteenth.
Thirteen sounds better.
I'm gonna do the thirteenth.
Thirteen.
Well, shoot for the thirteenth.
Of April?
Nope.
March.
That brings us to adjournment action.
Wait, wait, I got something to say. When you send out that, uh, that agenda and 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 Rita heads for the thirteenth, send out the menu for us to choose from.
I motioned to close at ten nineteen.
Oh, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, we're still there. All of you, we're still there.
Good night, y'all.
Night, everybody.
Good night.